This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedures. Members of the public may also submit comments via the Sanford, uh, city of Sanford website at www.sanfordmaine.org under government slash city council slash contact the council. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Okay, now for the roll call, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
Council Hanselman will be here, uh, a little bit late. She has a daughter who is a senior and they have some activities that she will be attending. So you'll see her coming to that empty seat. Council Martel.
Present.
Council Trenchmontane.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink and also present are City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Administrator And now for the minutes, the past minutes, in order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on May twenty first, twenty twenty four, may I have a motion, please?
To move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and a second. Jonathan?
One second.
And all those in favor? Thank you very much. In order to the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on May twenty first, twenty twenty four, may I have a motion, please? Jonathan, uh, Pete?
Motion.
Okay, now Jonathan, you have to second.
I'm sorry.
All right, thanks. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, and now for the mayor's report. And I have two items I will be talking about. The first item is, um, the closure of Heritage Crossing encampment. The closure of Heritage Crossing homeless encampment in Sanford scheduled for June fifteenth marks a crucial step in addressing the many public safety, uh, safety and public health concerns that have arisen related to the site. This action spearheaded by this, uh, city of Sanford through the collaboration between Sanford Police Department, the Sanford Housing Authority, York County Shelter Programs, and York County Community Action Corps comes in response to the encampment's growing impact on both the unhoused residents and the, uh, border Sanford-Springvale community. Over the past fall and winter, there is a population of homeless individuals that utilizes both the warming center and the encampment area. Most of those who utilize the warming center ultimately have returned to, have not returned to the encampment. There is an estimated population of ten or fewer people still using the site. This was when this was written, I believe there are more now. Housing navigators and case management services have been working directly onsite to provide coordinated case management for those individuals. The city will notify the remaining population that the encampment will be closed down by June fifteenth, twenty twenty four, in an effort to further encourage people to access available services. The city finds the site to be a public health hazard due to accumulated waste that is now entering the Mausen River and a safety hazard as the police respond to multiple calls to that location. Before June fifteenth, the city will continue to work with multiple providers to identify services to address the unhoused situation of each remaining individual. And I hope everybody heard that, there will be people down there to help you with housing. We are pleased to announce that the Heritage Crossing encampment location is proposed to become the future site of Sanford Housing Authority's Housing First Development. The Housing First approach aims to quickly connect individuals and families experiencing chronic homelessness with permanent housing without preconditions or barriers to entry. So that's what we're going to be building on that site. The Housing First Development will feature twenty four, uh, four, seven wraparound services for the residents, enabling them to focus on regaining stability and working towards long-term self-sufficiency. So if you guys can all have a copy of my statement so that you'll be able to refer to that, and Larissa, you can enter that into the minutes. And, um, to let you know, in Steve's report, we'll have more information. And then we do have on board, um, the Housing Authority and we have several other people of, from these agencies, um, on board to also answer questions. So I said there were two things. The second thing is, um, the two new fire stations that we need. So I'm going to give you, uh, several talking points on why we need the fire, um, to, two fire stations. So if you pay attention to this, hopefully it will, uh, enable you as the voter to understand how important your vote is going to be also. First, let's talk about the age of our stations. Um, I, fortunately, one of them is older than me. Both of our stations are significantly aged. The Sanford station is fifty years old. The Springvale station is a hundred years old. I think we probably had horses at that time who were pulling things. Due to their age, our stations will not, cannot be retrofitted to meet modern building codes and standards. So, which is one big reason why we need to redo those. Next, the size of our facilities is a major concern. They are too small to fully function even with renovations and cannot accommodate facilities meeting modern requirements. The current vehicle, vehicle bays are way too small to safely house the modern firefighting and emergency equipment. And some people have asked, well, why do you have to house that type of equipment? The reason is, is they need to be able to start at a moment's notice, so they can't be out in the cold and then expect them to start. In addition, our stations lack proper, um, separate decontamination zones or washdown areas. Contamination areas are essential for the health of our firefighters. A decontamination zone is a designated area where the, um, Sanford Fire Department can safely remove and clean personal protective equipment and themselves after exposed to hazardous materials and contaminants. The absence of proper decontamination zone poses immediate health risk to our fire department staff, potentially exposing them to hazardous materials, uh, for extended periods of time. And our concern about that is, is that, uh, a large amount of firefighters die because of cancer, and that's why we need to protect our staff. Also, they can take some of those, which I just found out, they can take some of those chemicals that are on their body or in their air, and they can take those to their home where their children and their partners are also then exposed. So that's why that is so important. Our station also lacks, um, equitability, living spaces for all personnel. This will really upset some of our, our people out there, probably the, the women. Um, there are currently no separate shower stalls for the women on the force. Female fighter, firefighters must wait to shower after a call until all the men have cleaned because only the men, uh, bathrooms have showers. Also, the bunk rooms in the stations are shared by male and female staff. Okay, that would prevent me from becoming a firefighter, right there. Safety is another critical issue. Both buildings fail to comply with current National Fire Protection Association and Occupational Safety and Health Administration standards, and most of us know that as OSHA, so that's probably familiar with, especially people who work in businesses. Non-compliance poses significant health and safety risks to personnel who work to keep our community safe. Location is also a significant factor, and especially where we have a, an aging community. Our community is growing and our stations are no longer optimal, optimally located. The new station locators were chosen to better serve our community, so let me explain that a little bit better. And I can't remember the exact miles, but I, Scott, you can correct me, I think it's seven miles? You want a station within seven miles of all the resident, oh, four miles.
Four minutes.
Four, four minutes, four minutes, okay.
Depends on how fast they're going.
Yeah, especially those vehicles, yeah. So you need it within four minutes because especially if, if I am dying of a heart attack, I want somebody there, fast. So we are looking at putting one down in Southern Sanford, and you'll see that's where Springvale Nurseries used to be. The other is, oh, I'm, is it?
Notre Dame.
Notre Dame Church up there, so that cover both Springvale area and, and South Sanford. And if you draw a circle around it, that's how those areas were determined. So we had to buy land within those areas. Finally, the cost implications. Okay, this is, this is very important because of what I previously said, especially about standards and our stations not meeting certain standards. If the project is approved by the voters in November, because November is when we're all going to vote, it will cost the community forty-two point five million dollars to build both stations. Not each station, but together, both stations. But a yes vote means the, um, that there are multiple federal grants can be immediately pursued to offset the cost. Now, understand, if we do this in November and we say yes, Sanford's probably going to be one of the first communities to apply for these grants. If we wait, and we have to wait another year, not only will it cost us two point six million dollars for each year of delay, we probably won't be able to obtain those grants because everybody else is going to be now cited that they have to redo their fire stations. So there's going to be a huge amount of competition. That's why it's important for us to act immediately. So there's that. Typically, I don't make that long a talk. Now, we're going to move on to, um, the city manager's, manager's report, and Steve, are you also doing the homeless report at the same time? Okay, thank you.
Okay, a very short report this evening for the manager's report. Uh, first item is end of year budget and roads. Uh, administration will present for the next council meeting on the eighteenth a year-end financial estimate for public works, uh, of their anticipated unexpendited funds and will seek, uh, council approval to move an amount of funds to the capital program. The transferred funds will be marketed, uh, will be marketed for specific pavement applications outside of the current capital program to roads in two categories. One is side streets whose cost to benefit did not raise, uh, rise to near term within the road program but are in absolute need of a maintenance overlay. These are also roads not needing full reconstruction and have been coordinated with any anticipated utilities repairs, uh, those have been coordinated and can be accommodated. And the second is a couple of roads that will be used during the raised grant reconstruction of the downtown. Uh, those roads will be used for detour, so we'll get a maintenance overlay on them now, uh, prior to that construction starting. So Director Hill will present the fiscal and pavement analysis and seek council approval on the eighteenth. Next is an announcement that the city recently received notice from President Biden's, that President Biden signed a major disaster declaration, uh, DR four seven eight five for York and Cumberland Counties for the April third through fifth winter storms. Governor Mills made the request to the president on May second. The declaration is specific to public assistance, which is state or municipal, uh, well, including county, for impacts caused by the severe weather conditions for the period. Additional designations may be made at a later date if requested by the state, if it's warranted, once they see the full results of the damage. We believe that the allowance under the declaration will provide for cost recovery for the ongoing damage removal, which is predominantly trees and other repairs associated with a three-day storm period. Historically, the declarations are confined to a twenty-four hour window, so you slide your scale in that twenty, where your most expensive twenty-four hour window is. Uh, for us, this was a multi-day storm. Our crews are still, still working on trees on side of the roads, you know, getting those cleared out of the right of ways and disposing of them.
Are the trees in your yard cleared yet?
Uh, there's still some wood. There's still some wood there. I have somebody that's slated to come pick it up, but, um, so the, um, we've been tracking those expenditures, use of equipment, man hours and such from the start, so we're in good shape to be able to report out and make an application, uh, when, when the terms come in. So historically, these declarations have been eighty percent federal reimbursement, ten percent, uh, state reimbursement, and ten percent local share. Next is the EPA Environmental Protection Agency's Brownfield Conference. Uh, several, what, one, two, three, four, four of us from the city staff attended, uh, the two-day conference, I was only, only able to attend the one day. We always attend these, uh, in light of the fact that the city just received a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for area-wide assessment to form phase one and phase two, initial design for properties that may be environmentally contaminated, and that was focused on the historic Millard area and, as well as other industrialized, uh, properties in, in the city. And the city also received a five million dollar remediation grant specific to the International Woolly Mill Boiler House, uh, off in Heritage Crossing. So the staff attended the conference in Portland, Maine. I, I will say that the Brownsfield does an exceptional job as far as their training, the training programs are amongst the best that I've ever attended. Um, our growth council director and small business advocate and our treasurer attended the conference specific to, uh, Brownsfield's one-on-one on how to administer the contracts because they're going to be relatively new to the process. Uh, I attended the procurement piece, and from that, we came back, I came back with a twenty-seven page document that Ronnie has now as well, uh, that we need to look at our procurement process. So they made it well-known to us that currently our purchasing, uh, policy and our procurement elements have previously been, uh, stood the test with EPA, HUD, and EDA, uh, but because of the Build America funding that's coming into this, there's new requirements that all change come October first, so there'll be a significant amount of amendments we'll need to make to those. Uh, so we'll be making those and bringing those forward to you in the near future. Uh, the assistant city manager position, this is a newly created position, it's been advertised for just over two weeks and scheduled to close on June twelfth. To date, we have seventeen applications filed with anticipation of more prior to close. The oral, oral board process will include the mayor, deputy mayor, city manager, HR director, finance director, and potentially two other persons. First round of interviews will focus on typically the top five or six candidates and focus on qualifications, with the second round interviews, uh, will be dependent upon the first round and will focus on the concentration of knowledge as it relates to the city's focal points and within the job description. Uh, it's a goal to start the first round interviews in June and make an offer by mid-July, uh, at the latest, and, and start will depend upon the candidate and their availability. So any questions on the manager's report?
Any, any questions? Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, homeless task force, uh, the task force met, uh, on June third, uh, that's the sixteenth time that they, they have met. Uh, the task force met again and focused on the latest actions on the growing concerns around encampments and the ability to address. The providing partners of York County Community Action, Sanford Housing Authority, York County Shelter Program, and city administration coordinated across the following areas. We took note again that the warming center at Lafayette School has closed for the season and, and yet continues, uh, but still continues to provide meals on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It was noted that utilization is anticipated as far as the meals are concerned to increase now that the facility is not both a warming center and, and a meal center, but is focused only on meals. The draft of the city's nineteen strategies, those will be presented here in detail later this evening, uh, was, was, uh, so the nineteen strategies for communities to address encampments humanely and effectively per the U.S. Interagency on Homelessness was reviewed. The partners noted that nearly all strategies had either been completed or significantly in progress or will soon be implemented due to the coordination across the partners seeking to address the unhoused in the encampments. The nineteen strategies will be before the city council on June fourth, that's here this evening, and will, and you will be asked to review, make amendments, and consider adopting that as city policy. Heritage Crossing encampment was noted, uh, to have been growing in numbers with people coming from undisclosed areas, uh, as the case managers no longer recognize all of those that are populating the encampment. Communications for services continue as well as the encampment will be closing as of June fifteenth due to the environmental, health, and safety concerns, uh, that are currently expressed. A resource hub will be placed at the Heritage Crossing site on or before June eleventh through June fourteenth to provide the greatest opportunity for case management and opening to services as needed by those at the site.
Steve, could you read that paragraph again?
No.
Because I think it's going to answer some of the questions that people were asking, um, about how do they get housing now if they haven't already got housing, and so I think that's a critical point.
So there, there have been case managers, there have been housing navigators. So there, there have been case managers, have been housing navigators, and others reaching out to people in the encampment and other unhoused situations, trying to offer services to people. So we're going to, to ramp that up, we will set up a specific hub. So we'll be setting up the, the canopies and such, starting June eleventh through the fourteenth. We'll have, the resource hub has worked well in the past, one that was set up at York County Community Action, but we're going to move it down the road, right, right there at the site. The resource hub will, will have staff for coordinated case management, housing navigation, the shelter program, and Naslon Healthcare will also be there to offer coordinated services, and those are specific to meeting the individual's needs. We note that there currently is capacity to meet the anticipated needs for rehabilitative and shelter services and provide individual, provided individuals will accept the offer of services.
And I think that one of the gentlemen with the sign, I like the other side of your sign. I really believe that that's exactly true. Housing solves homelessness, and that's one of the premises that the nineteen strategies we'll be talking about. And so you were, one of your, the gentleman, sorry, I can't remember your name, but you were asking about how do you get housing? And this is the thing, it's going to be brought right down to that site. No? Aren't they setting up a pop tent down there? By the housing authority? By the housing authority? Okay. For some reason, I thought Steve said it was down on the site.
With respect, Mayor, my question wasn't about...
No, 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 not now.
Hold, you can't talk now.
Not now.
You can't talk now. So they will be by, if, so everybody knows where the housing authority is, it's right there by, by the park. And so they can, they're going to have tents up there with all those agencies are going to be there to help people fill out the forms, then we can provide housing for those people who are there. If people wait, the longer they wait, the housing could disappear, because if you have so many people and a certain number of housing available, which right now there's plenty of housing available, you can register and they will place you for that. So, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I'll, I'll make a distinction that there's not plenty of housing available. There's shelter services available.
Yes.
Which then offers housing navigation and is a faster path towards becoming more permanently housed. So we have, there are housing vouchers available, housing, so the housing navigators, for example. There's housing navigators that are with York County Community Action, there's housing navigators at the Sanford Housing Authority, and there's housing navigators at the York County Shelter Program. Those navigators have been working cooperatively with each other. They have an inventory of, of apartments and other shelter options that, that they have record of, and they work cooperatively across the multitude of agencies to ensure that the coordinated case management is accounting for individuals as they need that housing. So it's not necessarily that there's thirty apartments waiting.
Right.
But there's shelter services, and it's not a tent in the woods.
And correct me if I get this wrong, Steve, but we need to clear that encampment and get all the hazardous materials out, so then we can build the Housing First project, which is going to be, actually, people will live in there as, Diane, those are apartments or rooms? What?
Permanent, yes.
Permanent housing.
With support services.
And with support services.
Yes.
So, and you don't have to be clean.
Do not have to be in recovery.
Don't have to be in recovery. Thank you very much. So that will, that's the purpose of, we need that encampment cleared, beside the fact it's becoming a safety hazard for those people who are down there. It's not the cleanest area to be in. All right, so Steve?
So we also, I've met with the state of Maine, the director of the Maine State Housing, an assistant director, also met with Greg Payne from the governor's office of innovation, as well of, as well as another individual that I, I forget the name at this point in time, specific to, let me back all the way up to December eleventh of two thousand twenty-three. We held the homeless housing forum here in the city of Sanford. That was specific to raising awareness to our legislative delegate, and we had about over two-thirds of the York County delegation there from the state, household, household representatives in the senate, talking to them about where the needs were, where the resources needed to go. Fast forward into the short session that started in January, there was a series of bills looking to put various levels of funding towards housing, be it low barrier, no barrier, various forms of shelter. We were seeking funding specific to the existing shelters, having them adequately funded for the remainder of the year, and we were hoping that the funding would carry forward from, from not just this fiscal year, but, but in the ensuing years. We felt that our message had got across well. We had very key members in the legislature at the York County meeting that we had here at the Sanford High School, where we found, this is my impression, but I think others share, it got lost in the translation at, towards the end of the legislative session, that the majority of the funding went to low-barrier shelters and, and not, and not the, they call it high barrier, but, but the, the next tier of shelters did not get the same similar consideration. And two and a half, two and a half million awarded just to the low barrier didn't put a dent into the system. So my, my time spent with Maine State Housing was around the fact that the legislature put significant sums of money towards housing and addressing our unhoused needs. I would just make an argument here that it not, didn't necessarily get into the right places. So that conversation really was focused with them on, how can our city, how can our region, how can our regional service providers that we work so closely with gain access to this critical funding to help us best address the needs of our unhoused? And one of those focal points was for street outreach workers to, to be that, that link. So our mental health unit in the police department, starting with, with one and now all the way up to four officers, well, two officers and, and two mental health workers have been performing that task, but they have other focuses that they, they need to move to. So we need financial assistance to put street outreach workers on there to bridge the gap between the housing navigators, the coordinated case management. It takes time to build the trust with individuals that are unhoused, to, to get them to take services, and we need to be ready to assist with that when, when they're willing to take those services. So that's an ongoing conversation with the, the state of Maine. You'll see in the, the nineteen strategies, that's highlighted in red as, as not been accomplished. You'll see that tonight. We continue to work on that aspect. The city, let's see, I have also had communications, the Maine Department of Environmental Protection contacted the city. They went through the police chief first, and now, now they're over to my desk. The DEP, the water quality and solid waste departments have expressed concerns about the conditions off in Heritage Crossing. So I had a conversation with them about why that, that property is to where it is today. So the history on that property is, the property was until just recently owned by Regco. Regco is the former owner-operator of the International Woolen Mill, that's the very large mill complex that's on the opposite side of the, of the street from Heritage Crossing. Up until two years ago, we still had communications with, the company is, is, is no longer functioning. It did not go through bankruptcy. They would communicate with the city through the attorney for the corporation, it's a local attorney here in the region. The former owner, an individual that we used to communicate with when I started here back in, in two thousand and twelve, no longer communicated, but the attorney would. So we would work with them as far as managing those properties down there. Two years ago, they stopped communications. So at that point in time, they would not allow or give us permission to post the land or do anything with their buildings, so the buildings continued to deteriorate, people were breaking into the buildings, we had concerns about that. The fire suppression system went down this winter in that, in that series of buildings for the last time, so it really becomes a major concern that individuals aren't in there. The properties, so as they stopped responding, they stopped paying their taxes two years ago. So the cycle is the taxes, the tax liens mature on a two-year cycle. So this April, the, the, the tax liens on all of the properties combined down there, the International Woolen Mill plus the property on the riverside, came up for tax lien foreclosure. City Council reviewed phase one and phase two that we had done under the Brownsfield program for the, all of those properties down there, and made an assessment to do a waiver of foreclosure on the large mill complex, but not do a waiver on the property that, where the encampment is across from Heritage Drive abutting the river. To allow that to become tax-acquired, to gain a level of control on that property, to start working with the homeless encampment that was there for which we couldn't get permission to do under the Regco ownership. So that's how the property came under city control, but we had a two-year period where we were basically hands-off, and the conditions have deteriorated to what they are today. So DEP is aware of that. They're coming down on June twelfth to do an assessment, and I would expect to get a very staunch letter demanding actions be taken there, because they know that there's waste that is infiltrating into the river now. It, the, almost the entire property, absent that small paved area that's there, is inside of shoreline zoning, and it's protected property by state standards. So we have that difficulty to, to address as well. So, police department is aware of other encampments that the property owners are now pursuing action there for those encampments as well. So it's, it's that much more critical that the nineteen strategies that we'll talk about later tonight are reviewed and I ask, I seek your adoption, because the community partners that are here in the room tonight and, and with us by Zoom have put an extraordinary effort in putting the, those, hitting those targets. It's a series of strategies that's spelled out by the federal government, so we seek to hit all of those points, and we seek to have equitable and humane treatment of those in the encampment and hopefully end their cycle of homelessness. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And all of that comes back to your statement on the other side when it says, housing solves homelessness. We fully, and the committee fully believes that. That's why, when the housing authority was willing to build on that land, the Housing First, we were very excited about that, because that'll help out tremendously.
So can I, can I speak on that?
Go ahead.
So Diane Small is here, the director of the Sanford Housing Authority. She has drilled it into my brain, that, that housing is the key to everything, not just homelessness, to everything, you know, employment, job security, and, and the whole, the whole gamut. So the city has, has done this for two years now. They have an annual housing summit, so all of the partners that have contributed towards various levels of the continuum of housing in, in our community participated in that. I think it was last September, September was the annual review on that. It's a very well-attended session. It was a very interesting and intriguing session to watch. I just pulled up my spreadsheet, so the, the city council has really put their efforts where they can. When you look at the tools that are in the toolbag to develop the continuum of housing, I actually had legislation sponsored in the last session, well, actually, the long session, seeking that the state help us, help us as a community participate with tax, what's called tax increment financing, to encourage the further development of affordable housing. The state really negated that. They pulled the state subsidies out of that, so we're back to just using our existing taxable base to do that. So I'm looking at a list here where the city council has implemented tax increment financing for a whole host of units, housing units here in the city over the last six years. I see senior housing, which is affordable. Sixty-six units have been subsidized through tax increment financing. Senior housing at market rate, eighteen units. ADA assessable specific, ten units. Skilled care, ninety-four units. Market rate, one hundred and thirty-five units. Affordable workforce, thirty-six units. And there's another one hundred and twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-five units sitting out there that are in the stages of being approved but not yet gone into construction. So that's four hundred and eighty-four units that the city has either already used tax increment financing on or anticipates using tax increment financing on to bolster the, the tight number of housing structures here in our community.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Welcome in. I'm glad you could make it, and congratulations on having your last child graduate. So congratulations on that, too. All right, let's move on to communications and presentations. Information on the upcoming referendum vote by the school budget. And Matt, I believe if you would introduce yourself, and you know I'm going to interrupt.
It's minimized.
Let's see. There it is. Good. How do I play this? How am I getting to play? Some help here. How do I get it to? Oh, it's on there. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
I should look there, instead of here. Great. Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to come. I was rushing over, I was a little out of breath. I was at our Margaret Chase Smith School, they're having a PTA meeting, well-attended, and I'm proud of many things in Sanford, but the community support is right high on the list, and to be able to see how our schools are supported by our volunteers to come and do that, so it's an opportunity for me to come and talk about the budget. In terms that, we do have the school budget referendum vote, that's coming up on Tuesday, June eleventh, so I appreciate having the opportunity to talk a little bit about that. It does feel like a while ago that I was here back in, as we went through the month of March, talking about the challenging budget, but the collaboration that we worked between the school department and the city council to be able to reach a budget to be able to help us. For us, back then, and it hasn't changed, our priorities that were driving the budget were we wanted to protect our learning environment, we wanted safe and engaging learning environments for our students and our staff. That was a major priority that we needed to put resources behind. We also wanted to make sure that teaching and learning was our focus, but we also had to support the social, emotional learning needs of our students. We wanted to make sure that our learning environments were welcoming. We've had diversity, an increase in diversity in Sanford with our students, which is a great thing, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're putting the proper supports to that. And we also wanted to make sure that we are working to remain competitive when it comes to our workforce, both in attracting and retaining our, our people. We wanted to make sure through York County and the surrounding areas that we remain competitive for that as we went through. That's what it looks like in terms of coming up for the budget referendum that will be coming on Tuesday. We were able to make down in terms of what the articles were for that. For us, just to summarize some of the things, we know, overall, I am proud of this budget. It was very challenging. I'm proud of the work that was done in terms of trying to be as creative as possible as we could, as we're trying to balance the needs of our students, but also making sure that what we're doing is also balancing that with our community's ability to pay and the impact on our taxpayers. I think we all can agree that this budget is probably higher than we'd all like in terms of that. From the school department's side, the budget is up five point four percent in expense for that. I mentioned the idea about wanting to remain competitive to attract and retain staff. We also have increased costs in health insurance this year that were a major impact on our budget. We also had transportation. We don't own our buses, so we had to negotiate a new contract, and that was something, too, that was also a major impact for us. For the school department, we are a high receiver of state subsidy, and so for us, every one percent increase in expense actually relates to a three point seven percent increase in taxation. And so that makes it even harder for us, as we're able to try to continue to be able to work for that. Currently, that the city council, the budget that was approved by Currently, that the City Council, the budget that was approved by the City Council has the mill rate going from $15.14 to $16.17. That's an increase of $1.03 per 1,000 with that, and that comes out to a 6.8% increase. At the time, we also talked about, from the city side, that there were some possible opportunities out there in the legislative session. City Manager Buck mentioned that early in his report, that there was hope that there'd be able to have other resources, be able to come back, to be able to help in some of those areas. That did not happen, unfortunately. For us, on the school side, I mentioned we are a high receiver of state subsidy. And so for that, the way the formula works is they really pay attention to valuation of your property. And so for us in Sanford, as well as practically all of Maine, but definitely in Southern Maine, in York County, in Cumberland County, people's valuation has increased. So if the valuation increase, that is something that people will then think, the formula then thinks, you have a more ability to pay more towards education. And that, as we know, is really not the case. Just because your house is worth more, it really hasn't changed more about your ability to come back and be able to pay. But for us, we received $567,498 less in state subsidy than we did because of the valuation in terms of that. I do want to point out for us that at the same time as we're trying to balance the needs of our students, when you look at the Sanford School Department, our per pupil expenditures in York County are the lowest. And what you do with that is, we are very fortunate in Sanford to have construction projects that were state-sponsored. So when you look at our budget, you're going to see our budget is high, probably by about $10 million because that construction, the costs are there as expenses, but we also get revenue to offset that. So it's just a pass-through. So when you take away that, and also, we do have Sanford Regional Technical Center with the nine sending schools. We host that. A major part of that is state-sponsored as well or with the sending schools. So when you separate that, apples to apples, we actually have the lowest per pupil expenditure rate. And so on the one hand, I'm proud of that because I think that tells us that we're doing and we're being very mindful with the resources we have. But at the same time, I also know that when the budgets are tight and challenging, you also want us to be able to point that out for people to be able to want to know that when it comes to supporting education, because we've been very fortunate in Sanford. I started by saying, one of the best things we have is community support. Our community supports our young people. They support our students. They support our greatest resource in our children. And doing that, it doesn't come easy. That's something that I feel like we've worked hard to earn the community's trust in doing that. That's not something that we take lightly, but that would be something that we continue to be able to work towards. So if you look at it, what that 6.8% increase in taxation means is that on a $300,000 home, that would equate to increase in taxes of $309 a year. That's unless the city does come up with, I know the valuation that we talked about was way back in April. I don't know, there's probably the possibility that there might be some more valuation that's been found. And if that's something, obviously from the school department, I would be recommending anything that we could do to be able to use that valuation to be able to look at kind of lowering that would be something that is supportive. I've gone out to be able to talk about the budget, whether it be at the Rotary Club or Kiwanis with the Traffton Center. And as I hear from people, obviously, they're obviously looking at anything that we can do for that. One of the ideas that I stole from Mayor Brink was, or I should say, I didn't steal it, I borrowed it. How's that? Yeah, I educationally borrowed Mayor Brink because when we were doing our budget process, and as challenging as that could be, as we're trying to be able to maintain services, but also being able to look at that, Mayor Brink used something about, "Did you know?" And did you know about all the things that were happening in the city that sometimes we're not aware of and we get lost in doing that? So I know from a school department, we wanted to also be able to kind of point that out to people in terms of what we are offering, in terms of the work that we're doing with that. We are one of the state's largest school districts. We have over 3,200 students. We go from pre-K, pre-K, four-year-olds, all the way up to adult education with that. I'm proud of our pre-K program. We have 96 slots in terms of being able to offer all-day pre-K for our four-year-olds in 96 slots. That accepts our families where they're not having to pay for that. We also know that that's allowing people also to come back into the workforce. We just were able to get a grant to also expand that with our partnership with the YMCA so that we can bring on another 16 people beyond that 96 to be able to do that. I also think that I'm proud of how we're able to also try to look at all and meet all of our needs. Sanford High School, we offer 150 different courses across 12 disciplines. That's pretty impressive, when you're able to come back and look at what we're able to do to meet the needs of our students. I went to a number of celebrations recently, whether it's our Jobs for Maine Graduates Program, Sanford Regional Technical Center Awards Night, the National Honor Society Senior Send-Off. And we've got students in our graduating tomorrow night that are going off to Yale, Wake Forest, Colby. So I feel like we can be able to match up with that, but we also have a wide option to be able to meet needs. Sanford Regional Technical Center, we have 22 programs there. 641 students are impacted that way. I mentioned the engagement that we have at all of our schools, but our elementary schools, we had probably over 50 family engagement activities that you talk about, where we're bringing the community together for those kids to be able to impact them at that early age. Athletic offerings, we have between the middle school and the high school, 60 different teams that are being offered to be able to help that as an avenue. When it comes to music and the arts, we also have a music program that is pre-K through 12. We also have a marching band that's won two gold medals recently to go forward with that. The theater program, the Sanford Performing Arts Center is part of this budget. And as the Sanford Performing Arts Center, we're able to have over 70 school events there, a wide range of everything from presentations to concerts. We had that Legislative Homeless Task Force that was also hosted there. We have a middle school and a theater program that we can match up with anybody in the state for what we're being able to match that up with. I mentioned Sanford Community Adult Education that's being able to help people with their credentials, but we're also providing enrichment activities for any members of our community who are also interested that way. Legislature approved free breakfast and lunch. We do that for our students, and we also are able to do that through the summer program. Earlier, there was, in terms of the Homeless Task Force report, homeless is also something that's impacted the school department. For us, we have supported over 200 homeless students this year in terms of being able meeting that definition that they don't have a stable residence to be able to do that. And that's something you probably don't really get to see that's kind of behind the scenes. We talked about our multilingual learners and the increase in diversity with that. We've had, we're now up to 134 students that are multilingual learners, and that's an increase of just 40% last year. Our graduation rate is over 90%. It's higher than the state average. And I'm proud of that because when you look at a school the size of us, we have other similar schools throughout the state who are reaching out to us to say, "Stanford, what's your secret or what are you able to do?" And a lot of that for us is being able to stretch our dollars and our resources to put things in place, to be able to have those resources the best that we can and balance that with the referendum. So next Tuesday, June 11th, three polling locations. For Ward One is Nassau Haunt Community Center. Ward Two is the former Saint Ignatius Gym, Sanford Christian Academy. And then Ward Three is down at Sanford High School and Sanford Technical Center. Polls will be open seven to eight. If you can't get to the polls for in-person voting, there is absentee in-person voting that is still going on today, tomorrow, and Thursday, up until June 6th, right here at City Hall, 7:30 to 5:30 in terms of looking at that. And our hope is that people will be able to have the opportunity to go out. It's not an opportunity to vote on the city budget. That's not something. It's on the school budget. And our hope is that people will continue to come back and be able to support our schools.
Could I just comment that Sanford Christian Academy is the gymnasium, not the High Street actual school. So it's the gymnasium on Riverside, which was the former Saint Ignatius Gymnasium. Just because it is, it's a change from the last time. So people don't go down to High Street because that used to be a polling location, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or anything else in terms of, once again, I will say, when you look at our increases, I'll end with this. Our increases, when you look around and you compare us to other areas, other municipalities our size, and just surrounding schools, our increase falls right in the ballpark with all of those. There's some that might be a little less, but for a lot of them, there are more than more in terms of that. So that's something that is not just unique to Sanford. Those are the challenges that everyone is having in terms of looking at that. And I will continue to say that I know from a school department, we very value the collaboration and the relationship that we have with the city as people understand the value of education and we're working together to be able to try to find those. And I'm proud of that. And that's something, too, that you might not always see that in other areas in terms of looking at it. We all wish that we were able to come back and come back and do more for that, but we're doing something as far as trying to be as creative and working that way as we can.
Thank you. And I think we have two councilors with questions. Ann?
And Mayor Moore, a comment for clarification for folks watching tonight. It's really important that they understand that the $1.03 increase and 6.8% is the combined school and city. So it was under the school summary budget, but that is the combined impact for both municipal and school. And I just want to urge folks to get out and vote. It's really important that we support our school budget and make sure we can move forward to the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Moore, did you have a question?
Just a quick, yeah, a quick question because it concerned me when I saw it the other day. How is the Sweetser funding problem going to impact our schools? Because I think the biggest discussion we had during the school budget process was the social, emotional, mental health of our children. And the announcement from Sweetser was a bit of a blow the other day, and I don't know how much it's going to impact Sanford.
Sure. No, it kind of confirmed the direction we were going in anyways because people were looking to be able to say, "Is that a resource that can support your needs?" And we had seen that it was not trending that way. And so that's where we were able, in this budget, to be able to put resources. Still expecting to be able to continue with resources for Sweetser. We have been impacted in the sense that we're going to remain frozen in terms of the resources that they've provided to us. There were openings that they had that we were, I guess, hopeful and optimistic that we'd be able to increase, to fill those. We're not going to be able to. We're going to maintain what we have, which is really just three clinicians throughout the district that way. So that's, we're going to maintain what we had. We were hoping to be able to go and have more. That's not going to happen. We have also reached out to other organizations that provide similar services to also see if we're going to be able to have some partnerships with them. Because with us, it's all hands on deck. This is something right now that, as we look at the needs that are coming in with our students and wanting that early intervention to be able to do that. So yeah, it's going to impact us, but I also feel confident that the budget that we've put forward is also going to be able to help address those challenges.
Thank you. And one of the other things I noticed when we were looking at the budget, you were making comments that because of after COVID, attendance was an issue. And I noticed on all the signs at the schools that have the signs that are kind of lighted, it said, "Attendance Matters," and you were really pushing towards that. And has attendance coming, is it slowly coming back to normal now?
We've put a lot of work in that with our resources, so I think we've been able to continue to have that turn around and be heading in the right direction. It still remains a challenge. It's going to have to be a point of focus for us, and that's going to have to be something that we start with probably as a campaign to continue to improve the attendance of everyone that's connected with us. That's, you know, our students, our staff, everyone to be able to come back to do that. So yes, it's been able to come. Are we satisfied and happy with it? No, it's still an area that we got to continue to make sure it's trending upward.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just one more plug about that valuation. If you're just finding valuation, that would be something to put towards tax relief that would be very helpful.
You never give up. Good for you, Matt.
Exactly. All right, with that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now we're moving on to public participation, and let me explain how this works. Public participation is for things that is not on the agenda. And you are a Sanford resident to participate, Sanford-Springvale, to participate in the public participation. We give you three minutes to speak. And to let you know, we do not, the council does not respond at all to public participation. And the reason being is when the public comes up here, that's one side. And so we take notes, and then if there's something that we can address, we investigate it. And so we have both sides of whatever is happening. So we'll have a complete picture. Because if I made a comment on what you were talking about, it might not be appropriate, you know, to what the real issue is. So that's how public participation works. So Steve, do we have anybody on our list? Oh, here's our list. All right. And the first person is Rebecca Jackson. And by the way, my name is Becky, so I really appreciate the Rebecca part. So come on down. And just introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
Now, can I ask, so as you know, we are always in the Sanford area weekly with the homeless, but we do not reside in Livingston. Can I still say what we need to say?
Our charter says it has to be Sanford-Springvale residents.
There is nothing in our charter, so rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure, excuse me.
So we can bend it. I mean, it's pertinent to Sanford.
Would you guys be okay with that for tonight?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got to go ahead.
Excuse my nerves. My name is Rebecca Jackson. I am the co-founder of It Takes a Village 207. Tomorrow will mark our 66th consecutive week working one-on-one with Sanford's unhoused population. I am here with concerns for the people impacted by the upcoming closure of the encampment at Heritage Crossing. The reason for the closure is stated as health and safety concerns. Around February of this year, I might be wrong of the date, the city abruptly halted all trash removal. The snow then melted, and though we provide weekly trash bags, there's been no place to bring the trash since. Our organization has raised enough funds for a dumpster several times, but we're told always that Buck was bringing in a dumpster. We had $500 donated for Sanford's orange bags, but we're told by the city that they would not pick up at that location. And now when driving by, you all see the results of five months of trash accumulated. We've witnessed them bag, hundreds of bags. We feel the reason of the abrupt retraction of the trash removal was to provide the ammo needed today to do what's being done now because we don't know why the trash was halted. We have grandfathers and grandmothers out there in their 70s. We have people of all ages and backgrounds. Right now, all being in one place serves a consistent location for outreach workers like us and case managers to effectively provide assistance. Having 50-plus scattered is going to make that more challenging. We keep hearing that the unhoused are declining housing being offered. Last week, we asked everyone that we served last week, which was 54, this question, and they were puzzled and said there was no housing that they were eligible for. We want to know what obtainable solutions have been in place. There is no affordable housing out there. Shelters are full, mental health beds are full. And regarding the housing first, our question would be, what do we do? What would they do in between? We also want you to know that we are here to help. We've been told many times the city sees us as part of the problem by providing weekly meal and assistance. Mayor Brink recently requested that people refrain from feeding the homeless because it's deterring them from accepting housing, and that's not comprehensible to us as one meal a week is not going to be the deciding factor of housing. Being given a tent is not going to make someone not want an apartment with running water, a bed and bathroom. Housing is a human right, not a privilege, and the same goes for food. And the same goes for food. Feeding the homeless is an expressive conduct protected by the First Amendment. With that said, we are more than just a group of people serving meals. We also provide a variety of resources. We have personally driven many to rehab, helped them acquire needed services like mental health, and have reunited families.
Rebecca, your time is almost up, so wrap it up, please.
Okay. Countless hours building relationships. We recently asked them their favorite part about us coming, and it was that we treated them like human beings and we showed them compassion. Each person deserves compassion. Sweeps are not solutions, but being, but sweeping major crises is under the rug. We want to work with you, so let us know how we can work with you to be part of realistic and obtainable solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Journey? And make sure you speak right into the mic, please.
My name is Journey. I'm a board member of the Maine Homeless Veterans Alliance. I have been since 2018. I also founded the It Takes a Village program in 2020 with my daughter. I'm not going to read the whole thing because some of it's been covered. But I do want to point out that the town of Sanford, York County, and the state of Maine has not helped us one bit in 66 weeks. The money that we have brought into this town to help the homeless population is insane. And not one person has helped us. It's my daughter and I and a handful of volunteers and doing fundraisers to get that accomplished with. Now, let's see. I also want to bring up, last week, we had at least four overdoses. They didn't die because somebody was there to give them knock hand. What's going to happen to the ones who go out and they're not in the encampment anymore? And they're camping out in the woods somewhere by themselves? They're going to die. Let's see here. There was one thing that was brought up earlier, and it was about the 30 units that will be for them to move into and that building that you're going to replace the encampment with. How long from the time they applied to that, on the week of the 11th, before those apartments are ready? And what will they be doing in the interim? Let's see, one more. We've been told many times by the officers in town that most of our homeless in our encampment are unhousable. We feel that they're all housable if it's done the right way. So are we, I just need to know that we're going to make sure that everybody is going to be housable, not just the ones who people or the police department thinks are housable. Those are just some things I wanted you guys to think about. And I really hope that nobody dies because the encampment got closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Journey. And Rebecca Harris is on Zoom, but I don't see her hand up. She's not on yet?
Maybe she has the wrong link.
Okay. Diane Conley, your hand is up.
Yes, Mayor. What I'm about to say is going to sound like questions. I just want you to maybe address them in the future. First of all, I've been attending the fire feasibility study meetings for a long time and before you were mayor. And I've listened to a lot of stuff. And some of the stuff that I would like answered is, why aren't you having a forum so people can address questions to you in public? That was a question that was brought up. And it wasn't, it wasn't allowed. I still have questions about ladder, or truck 37. Why isn't it still in service? And it's been so long out of service. And what are the problems that we're having with this truck? And I'd like to have discussions about PFAS in the turnout gear of the firemen. And why aren't that, why isn't that being discussed? We have supervisor vehicles for the top three tier of the fire department. And they're going to fire scenes and they're putting the turnout gear back in their vehicles. Why don't we have pickup trucks that have separate compartments away from them when that, when that scenario happens? We used to, but now we're having SUVs and they're putting the turnout gear back into the vehicles and then either going back to the station or, you know, not addressing that to help them health-wise. And those are the questions and things that I'd like to hear from, from the council. And the infrastructure and what it's going to cost for the infrastructure to go in to these new stations, lights, reangling of intersections. Those are things I'd like to hear about. And I just don't see them being addressed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Elizabeth Neto?
Sorry, it's my first one, so I thought that we were here, we signed it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for coming, though. Appreciate it. And Donna, I'm going to get your last name wrong because I can't tell if that's an L after the A.
Alger.
Alger? Donna, come on down. Your writing was just too fancy for me.
Donna Alger, I'm a resident of Waterboro, but I would like to speak about homeless.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we already said that the people could speak.
Thank you, thank you. I have been in meetings with Manager Buck and the, some of the people that are in the task force. And I really want to give you guys kudos. You have done a fantastic job. And I use Sanford as an example in other places that I speak in the state that this is a great team. So let me introduce myself. I created a Facebook group called the Maine Homeless Resource Guide because I'm very interested in our systems all working together and being more transparent and finding solutions. So I'm going to skip a lot of this because my mom just fell and texted me and I have to get to Maine Mid. Okay, so the part that I really wanted to talk about was when Manager Buck was talking about the summit that you had, which was fantastic. I wanted to let you know that in our state, there are two organizations that are responsible for homelessness. One is the statewide homeless council, and that's a state mandated body. And the other is the main continuum of care, and that's a federal mandated body. And they work together with some joint committees. And the one that I think that really is important for you guys is called the Policy Committee. I'm on that committee. And when, when I heard Megan spoke, from the shelter spoke at the Region One Homeless Council meeting about the funding that was not approved, I, it really, my heart sank because I have been in that policy committee listening to them push the low-barrier shelter funding. And I never heard anything about the other funding. I didn't know that that was at risk of not being funded. So the Policy Committee create, we create a document and we send it to the governor and to our legislators. So that is where your voice really makes a difference. These are the policies that we need. This is what our city needs. So I wanted to tell you about this resource. And I also wanted to tell you when the upcoming meetings are. Because it's very hard to find them online. I post them in my group. So the next continuum of care meeting is June 20th at 1:00. I always post the Zoom link to those if you find my Facebook group. Also, you can get it if you sign up for mail at MaineHomelessPlanning.org, I believe. The statewide homeless council is having a quarterly public meeting on June 11th at 10:30. And for our region, York and Cumberland County, there's a Region One Homeless Council monthly meeting, June 26th at 1:00 p.m. And the Policy Committee I have on my calendar is June 27th. Okay, that's it.
Right.
I hope that helps you. And thank you all for your work. Very much appreciated.
Go to your mom now.
Yeah.
I'm now worried about your mother.
All right, the next one on the list is Brian. And Brian, would you say your, your last name when you get up here and introduce yourself? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian. Oh, it's been a while since I've done this. My name is Brian Arboreo. I'm currently homeless. I have been homeless in the state of Maine for the last three years. I feel like we may have gotten off on the wrong foot earlier. But during that three years, I've been exposed to so much trauma, both physical and psychological, from the communities, from law enforcement, from systems, from the elements, the nonstop traumas that are both latent and manifest. So if I come off a little bit too loud and a little too brash for some people's taste here, I apologize. I still haven't worked through it yet. For the last seven months, I've been up at the Alfred Shelter. I've sat here today and I've listened to the manager and I've listened to the mayor. And I've heard a lot of numbers tossed around. And as I listen to the numbers, it occurs to me quite clearly that your calculus and your equation is almost intentionally lacking. You speak about people refusing housing as if I would. I've been begging for housing. I've been searching for housing. I have navigators that can't find it. I have case managers that don't contact me. I have landlords and property management groups who in this state can engage in discrimination of source of income. They hear the word voucher, they won't rent to us. You want to take the homeless, the unhoused, and be compassionate and get them off the street into housing to get them into shelters? The shelters are at capacity. You shut down the warming center. We just discussed that the only shelter within walking distance of here didn't get funded. Where is this housing you're talking about? Where are we supposed to go? And in that meantime, this attitude that we had some sort of agentic choice to be standing out there, to be exposed to the things I've been exposed to? That that's a choice? I want every one of you to look at me. I had a house. I had a white-collar job. I had a wife. I paid property taxes. I've paid into the system. How come I don't have housing? Do you think it's because I haven't tried? Do you think people like me don't try? I know it's very convenient for you all to look at the encampments and see what a mess it is. But it's a bit disingenuous when you cut off services to pick up their trash. Where are they supposed to take the trash to? You all know it's building up. You're going to tell me about the water being contaminated next to an industrial mill that's been, who the property owners have abandoned? And you're going to tell us all with a straight face that that water is contaminated by the people that don't have bathrooms? And not what was going on inside those mills for decades? I listened to the last speaker on the school thing, say 200 kids coming from unhoused situations. How many apartments does Sanford have?
Brian, you're almost at the end of your three minutes.
The numbers don't add up. You guys know the numbers don't add up. And you sit here and you try to victim blame those of us that are economic refugees from this housing crisis that we didn't create? And you guys want to blame us for it? Just like the spoiled water down there by the mill? And how dare any of you come down on us?
Brian, thank you, your three minutes are up.
For feeding the poor.
Oh, Brian, by the way, I wanted to congratulate you on your new apartment in Portland. I hope it was helpful to have the resources help you find one.
I have to go to DC for bad.
Okay, thank you. Now on to public hearings. And I'll need to put my glasses on to be able to see this. Let me explain public hearings. This is not for the council, this is for the public. And this is at a time where we hear people who are in favor and people who are against. So I will read what the, I'll open a hearing, I'll read what it's about, and then if there's no comments, I'll close the hearing. All right, so I'll open the hearing. It's a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed changes to the City of Sanford ordinance, Chapter 128, Fire Prevention Article 8, Registration and Permits to Add Section, I think that subsection 128-31, Permit Required for Open Fire. Do we have anybody here to speak for? Anyone against? I close this hearing. I'll open the next hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new liquor applications with malt.
Vinous.
Vinous and spirituous privilege submitted by, and I'll get his name totally wrong. Gray O'Meier, thank you very much. Inc., 16 School Street, Sanford, Maine. Do I have anybody to speak for?
You want to come introduce your new restaurant? Is this yours?
Come on down. See, this is a time for free advertising, too.
Free advertising.
It's a commercial.
Because we are all anxious for it to open. So tell us about your new restaurant.
Thank you. Well, my name is Ruben Savalit, and I try to open this location. Something more authentic Mexican food, fresher, so. I just try to do my best that I can to.
Great, well, we are so excited to have you here.
What is opening day?
Well, I expect it next week. Depends because I still have trouble now with the service. I already have, but now they are, because I have been taking too long to open, so. After next week, we don't know, but I let you know, so.
Okay.
Wonderful.
All right. We'll see the big open sign.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Sanford.
Thank you.
Okay, I close that hearing. Open the next public hearing on the proposed amendment to Chapter 280 of the Sanford City Ordinance for the revision for subsection 280-13-5 standards for conditional use approved for the addition of subsection F, excavation contracting business. All right, is anybody? So you're going to explain this to us, right?
Thank, yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is an addition to the existing conditional use approval section of our code that is specific to excavation contracting businesses. I wanted to just highlight the difference. This is not mineral extraction. This is excavation contracting businesses. So people that do excavation work and have diggers, bulldozers, large construction vehicles, this is not mineral extraction. It's a different use. And we're not done with that one yet. So, okay, so, so this ordinance amendment is intended to allow So, okay, so, so this ordinance amendment is intended to allow excavation contracting businesses as a conditional use in the RR and RMU zones. Excavation contracting businesses are currently permitted with review in these same zones, but only as an accessory use to a single-family residential use, which means it has to be on the same lot as an existing residential use. Stat finds that there is no basis for necessitating excavation contracting businesses to be accessory to a single-family use, and proposes the conditions for conditional use approval below. Excavation contracting businesses are currently allowed as permitted in the IB and AD zones, permitted with review in the IR zone, and conditional use in the urban zone. However, even though it's currently allowed as a conditional use in the urban zone, there have never been any specific conditions spelled out in order to review those applications. So the planning board has been very vocal in asking us to draft specific conditions that apply to these different land uses that are deemed conditional, so that they have some more specific items to be looking for when evaluating those site plans. So the additions to the ordinance include the excavation contracting business must have frontage on a numbered highway in Sanford, so it reduces the wear and tear on local roads to those that are a little bit higher maintained and also are already seeing a significant amount of truck traffic. The minimum lot size for this, we kept it the same as in other areas, so the minimum lot size is five acres. That is what it would have been if it was an accessory use to a residential, so we just kept that the same. The minimum setback, so here we state that the minimum setback for any parking or staging areas used for equipment storage shall be located with a minimum setback distance of 100 feet from the property line of a residential use, unless A, the residential use is owned by the excavation contracting business, or B, an easement with any residential abutter along property lines where the required setback cannot reasonably be met, stating that the excavation contracting business is allowed to operate within the required setback is signed and recorded at the York County Registry of Deeds. So essentially, anyone that is trying to place a excavation contracting business within 100 feet either needs to own the house that it's within, or has to have an existing easement in place and registered. And there is one comment that in talking about this ordinance, we would like to propose to be added to that section, so that instead reads three minimum setback, any parking staging area or garage used for equipment storage. Previously, we were thinking it was only the exterior parking and idling of large equipment, but I think in talking it over with the code enforcement department, we've decided that even within a garage, it can still make a lot of noise. So we'd like to add that for the second read, and I will update that language if it's amenable to the council. The last point here is buffering. All outdoor staging or parking areas for equipment used by the excavation contracting business is buffered by a vegetated buffer a minimum of 15 feet high and 30 feet wide, or other buffering and/or fencing options as determined by the planning board. The board may request a larger buffer if necessary for noise remediation.
Thank you. Is there anybody to speak against? Hearing none, this hearing is closed. Are there any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Under old business...
You're approved. All done. You can run away if you'd like.
Under old business, in order to approve proposed changes to the City of Sanford Ordinance pertaining to Article 2, Chapter 120 Fees, Chapter 149, Subsection 6.8 Vacant Building Fees, Article 3, Subsection 226-28 Digging Permits, Article 2, Subsection 78-4 Impoundment Fees, and to certain other municipal fees. This must be read on two separate occasions, this is the second reading. All right. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Moore. Second, Pete.
I'll second that.
Any questions or concerns? Jonathan?
I just wanted to make a comment. So I think most of us have probably reviewed these, but they're fairly nominal increases to kind of help cover costs. Nobody likes fees going up, but I did look through them, and they don't seem to be excessive, so just wanted to make sure that there was some comments around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. All those in favor? Thank you. Under new business, Presentation on the Expenditure of Funds Previously Authorized for Operation of Anderson Learning Center. And do we have somebody online doing this? Oh.
Good evening. On February 20th, the City Council authorized $54,574 towards the operation of Anderson Learning Center pursuant to the Sanford Springvale Development Corporation lease. As of May 28th, the City of Sanford has released funds in the amount of $32,117. These funds were authorized similar to a line of credit to cover costs until such time as leases are filled to the point where expenses are covered again. According to Donna Burke, who's the operations manager at the SSDC, the lease with the agency on aging has been signed as of May 15th, which is terrific news, and believes she will no longer be requesting any further funds from the City of Sanford. In your backup, I've provided a summary sheet. I've issued five checks to 11 vendors. In your backup, I've included information as who the vendor is and the amounts paid. I do want to mention that we do have a board meeting tomorrow to start the review of the current lease process.
Thank you.
Any questions? And my question would be, do we approve this, or we just accept? Do we have to have a motion?
It was just, no, no motion necessary. It was a requested presentation.
All right, great, thanks. I know how you like to present. You are. In order to approve changes to the City of Sanford Ordinance, Chapter 128, Fire Prevention Article 8, Registration and Permits, and Add Subsection 128-31 Permit Required for Open Fire. This item must be read on two separate occasions, this is the first reading.
Madam Mayor, since he didn't give a presentation during public hearing, do you think it would be appropriate for him to let people know what we're changing?
Are you talking about Scott?
Yes, Scott Sucey.
I know he was anxious to come down, I could tell before we even asked him.
He jumped right out of his seat.
I wasn't sure of the timing of when to talk about it. Sorry. So there was new changes this year to the main open burning laws, and I wanted to see how they corresponded with the City of Sanford's open burning ordinances, and there wasn't one. So basically, I narrowed it down, took the parts out of Maine's open burning laws, put it into an ordinance, so not just, people would know what we expect, but all of our staff members would know what to tell people when they called to what to expect, because if you read Maine's law, it changes from whatever side of the sheet you're looking on. So I made a simple outline, a small ordinance, that requires an open, requires a burn permit, and the avenues to get the burn permit for free, they don't cost anything, and it lets us know online who's burning and who isn't, so those calls for this fire or that fire or somebody's house, we actually have an address and a permit to go along with that. So it saves on those delinquent calls, I guess you could call them, as long as we know there's a permit out there to do it. If you're cooking and it's under three by three, there's really, we can't stop people from using open fire to cook with, but it has to be under that three by three size. And it corresponds to like the burn pits and things that you can buy from local vendors, Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, things you can put in your yard, those fall under that statute, so. And I think you have the wording was in the packet of the ordinance.
Any questions, Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. So I was looking at this a little more closely, and while it seems to kind of align with the state statutes, I'm wondering if it's really redundant. There's, the one thing I did notice, what does it talk about? No burning in barrels, which isn't, does not seem to be covered in the state statutes, other than it says fireplaces or like a grill. So I'm wondering, is this necessary? Is it redundant? Are we looking to just ban burn barrels? Is that kind of what this is? Or is it more just to kind of get people to understand where, what's appropriate for when they need a permit?
Basically, just for that, what people need to know, but it's against the law in the state of Maine to burn a barrel. That was up years ago when people used to burn their trash in the yard, so they outlawed burning in barrels.
Right, that does not appear to be allowed in this current state statute. So if we're going to move forward with this, I had a few comments. This says a written fire permit, whereas a state statute says that since you're doing it online, it just needs to be, somebody needs to have it available on their phone or some other device, they don't necessarily have to print it out. This doesn't allow for family of landowners, like my mom has property, and sometimes we have to do a fire, like burn some brush, and, yeah, this would, it'd be limited to just the owners and not family members or designated people that could act on their behalf. There's a few other things that maybe we can go through later, but maybe this could go back to public safety or something to discuss a little bit further for some...
Jonathan, I'm confused at what your questions are, because it seemed like you were saying one thing, but then another. So could you ask, what are the specific questions you're asking about this? What are your concerns?
I'm concerned that this needs some amendments, and if it's only intend...
And what would those be?
I'm sorry?
Be specific.
Be specific?
Yeah. Because that's why we do the first reading, so we're specific about what needs to be addressed.
Okay, so, online, it doesn't need to be printed, according to state statute, it can be on somebody's phone. It says owners, renters, or contractors, et cetera, but it does not include family members of owners, or someone that they, someone acting on their behalf. Says any person, Section E talks about any person burning without a permit, when that should include the exception under Title 12. That's not included. And then wood waste is not defined, and then the Title 12 of the main statutes should include the subsection, because it's kind of difficult to find online. So I think there's some edits that could be made that make this a little clearer.
Scott, did you want to address any of those now, or do you need to go back and come?
Yeah, if you could submit those in writing, because I...
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to do that. I just want to make sure we're, you know, being clear to people.
Well, I'm just throwing out, just on basic on one of these, you can't even get a building permit, even if you're going to be renting, without having the owner sign off on it. So I don't see, I would, I as the owner of any, of any of our properties, would want to sign off if anybody pretended to be the designee. I'd want to know if it would be burning on my property, so. And if you can't even get a building permit without the owner signing off, I don't think we should be able to do fire either. So that's just one that I'm commenting on. The other two, I agree, that if you want to put a little bit more in writing, so it's a little clearer than what you're stating, public safety, is that where it started? Or was it property? Do you remember where you came for that one?
I talked about in public safety, but...
Was it, I thought it was property.
Property. I didn't remember this coming up in public safety.
Yeah, so it was property.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, in order to approve a proposed educational campaign slogan, "A Safer Tomorrow Starts Today" for the November referendum vote on the proposed new fire stations.
Hello.
Take it away, Jordan.
I just quickly want to address something that Diane Connolly had mentioned about a form for FAQs, and there actually is a form on the Sanford Connects New Fire Station page, and you don't need to be a member, so you don't have to submit an email, and all those FAQs are publicly answered, so if anyone else has that question, they can access it there. So I think many of us can remember when we were voting on the schools, seeing the "Our Schools, Our Future" signs around town, and the fire station working group really liked that slogan and kind of wanted a slogan that would capture that feel for the fire station. So the group felt that "A Safer Tomorrow Starts Today" would resonate with many in the community. We felt that it highlights the city's dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of both the Sanford Fire Department staff and the residents they serve. A safer tomorrow isn't just for the Sanford Fire Department, it's for the community that will benefit from better fire protection services, faster response times, and improved emergency medical services. In addition to our main slogan, we would like to adopt a secondary slogan. Every day, Sanford Fire Department, or SFD, depends on what we're printing it on, protects us, and today, your vote protects them. We felt that this slogan kind of emphasizes that mutual or reciprocal relationship between the community and our firefighters. Every day, the men and women of our fire department risk their lives to keep us safe, and now the community has a chance to save the day. So I put together some draft yard signs to give us a visual of what the slogan will look like in print, and you'll notice, and a majority of them, that they have the same font and same color, so you want to build some brand continuity with this. I don't know if I can scroll on here. Okay. So the first one was one that I had showed to the city manager this morning, and he felt that it wasn't as strong, because it didn't say, actually, I think I had, have new ones that I sent to Larissa.
So I'm gonna, I've looked at these and done the yard signs, several of them are too busy for yard signs. They're great for like palm cards or things that you're going to mail to people, but when you're driving by, if there's a lot of little words, nobody reads them, so why print them?
I have new ones.
That's my thought. So I'm going to recommend that you find a little bit of money to do some mockups, because you will, and then put them on a lawn and drive by. Because if you can instead highlight the primary, "A Safer Tomorrow Starts Today," the voting and the date, and fire stations, those words, but like every day, SFD protects us, today, your vote protects them, that's like mailings. That's a great thing on the mailings. Yard signs, nobody will see it, so why waste the space?
So that's pretty much what the city manager said to me this morning. So I prepared new ones.
Sorry.
Took the words right out of his mouth.
We're getting there.
I just want them to see it when...
Yes.
Yeah, I just want them to like click on it really fast when they're going by, have a positive message.
And so I think like I, you'll notice in a lot of this stuff, that it just has like "Vote November 5th," Sanford Fire Department, we really want people to connect the fire department with voting on November 5th. There's obviously going to be a lot of election noise, and you kind of need to break through that now.
Do we know what number we're going to be on the ballot yet?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Because typically what you see is "Vote Yes" on one. When you just put "Vote" and a check mark, it's meaningless.
Well, so I think with that, that there was some kind of stickiness with if the city can say "Vote Yes," so the hope was that a check mark will...
Ah, okay, because it's the city, and they aren't allowed to say "Vote Yes." So, I as a private citizen could make those signs, but not as...
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I actually, the middle one in here, this one, this one was the clearest, am I right?
Yes.
And so then I would just check on your color scheme.
Yep, and so I think I had done a couple more that are mockups of that middle one, because that is what the city manager had said, too. There's a lot in there. So there's a new one that I added, just with the fire logo, still that same thing, of just trying to keep it very simple.
Take the logo out.
Take the logo out. You liked the first one.
Take the logo out.
Okay.
Yep, too much stuff.
Jordan, they charge you for colors. I think you get two colors, two colors for the price of the sign.
Okay.
When you start adding three colors, four colors, price goes up.
Like I said, the value is in the many signs.
Right, two colors, if you can keep it to that, that would be the cheapest way to go.
Can you tell that some of us have run for office?
No, what do you mean? Well, you're the expert, so I'm taking notes on this. No, what do you mean? Well, you're the expert, so I'm taking notes on this.
This is like an eye test. Which one looks better, this one or this one?
And do not use red as your primary thing, because people can't visualize it. It, it plays against the physical ability of your eyes.
Be creative. People associate red with the fire department.
Yeah, it's not, it's not readable, is the problem. And I am all about Sanford red. I hate that we're using blue in our community these days, but it is hard to read.
Okay, I will mess around with the colors and-
And that's why most political signs are navy blue and white, cause you can see them.
Okay, I will mess around with the color and I'll send something.
You know, as a highlight, underline.
It's an extra color.
Or the, oh, you can only use just the white and the, uh, yeah, it's not that much money. Yeah.
Play around, play around.
Play around, I'll send some new options of the yard signs, but-
Love the slogan.
Thank you.
Just don't use blue for anything fire. Just saying, just saying.
Why can't you use blue for fire?
Oh, goodness.
Oh, I get it now, okay, just got it.
There's blue, there's red, there's, yeah.
Okay, if you wanna scroll a little more-
Might do better with a red background, white lettering, I don't know.
No, you can't do red at all.
Never red?
No, never red.
Talk to Brett, that's a great idea. See if he has any, like, he's made his mistakes. He's older.
I know the fire department might like red, but it's not gonna get a vote. Okay?
Okay, so the next, if you wanna go down a little more, one more.
Did they use yellow for the school?
You can zoom in at all.
Yellow and black, yeah.
So, I've been working with WBRC on some promotional materials, and this is a draft of the construction signs that will go on site.
Nice.
Beautiful.
Um, WBRC is working on creating a money shot for the Sanford rendering. We felt like we had one that really captured Springville, but we didn't have the best for Sanford. And I think it's partially how the building is laid out. You can't see the full thing straight on. So, this image will change slightly. And we also will be removing that seal in the corner with, and just adding a November 5th checkmark. And then we'll be replacing the Growth Council's logo with the city's correct logo. And if you wanna scroll to the next one, this is the Springville one, and I felt like that was more of a money shot than what we had for, um, the Sanford Headquarters Station. And then there was some discussion, whereas the rendering says Sanford District Station on the building, but the building will be in Sanford, or will be in Springville, so I think that that was a discussion that needs to be had before we print out the signs.
If you want a yes in Springville, make sure, Springville. Yeah, I mean, I saw you jogging in Springville.
Trust me, Steve said that Springville didn't exist today.
I tell, I tell that to everybody.
I said, "We have our own zip code in a post office."
But they have never met it in incorporated town. I tell that to people from North Sanford all the time.
Sorry to throw you under the bus.
Get hit by that bus?
Like, north turner, south turner, west turner, yeah.
As the only counselor from Springville, we definitely do exist.
We have a postcode, we have a post office, what more do you want? And a gas station. Um, so, at the last meeting, I had said that we would like to turn the unveiling of the signs into a media event, invite people in to see. So, I'm hoping that we can do something in the middle of July, so if everyone could email me if their, what their availability is for that month, and we can hopefully try and coordinate something with everyone's schedules. We also have a draft poster idea, and so we're aiming kind of for that perfect balance of providing information without overwhelming the reader. Um, two changes for this is answer the call will be replaced with our new slogan, and we also will change that "Vote Yes" on question one to just "Vote on November 5th". But if anyone has any comments on this, you wanna relook at it, cause I know I didn't have it prepared in the packet, I can send it to everyone if they want to review that some more. And we will be doing a Sanford poster and a Springville poster. And then the last thing is a yes/no campaign. So, I tried to use, um, practices that I know have been successful, so I'm really trying to emulate some stuff that the school had done, and the city manager was discussing that, something that he felt that was successful with the school project, was a yes/no campaign. And it's not necessarily telling people to vote yes, but it's saying what a vote yes does. So, for example, a vote yes will provide fire protection for Sanford residents and proper working conditions for the men and women of our fire department. It will provide a clean living space, separate from contaminants, and quiet space to address traumatic experiences. A vote yes will provide, um, residence protection and firefighters, the facilities designed for the next 75 years at a taxpayer cost equal to a weekly cup of coffee. And then a no vote would increase overall cost for taxpayers due to an annual increase of 2.6 million in construction costs, along with the city's inability to leverage outside funding sources without an approved project. Additionally, the city will still need to bring our current stations up to pending OSHA requirements. So, the thought is to kind of explicitly lay out, when you vote yes, these are all the things that you are getting, and then when you vote no, this is what can happen with a no vote.
So, all I'll say on a lot of that, all great information, try to get it as untechnical as possible. So, the, that guy, that guy, try to take what they're saying and bring it down to the level of, of the most average voter. OSHA, I know OSHA, most people don't, okay? So, like, health and safety, like, just bring it down a little bit. The other thing is just something that maybe you can find. I'm looking at this picture, and when you're talking about the ages, it would be so, and the, the modern equipment, it'd be so fun to have a picture of the Springville Station with a horse and buggy in front of it, and then like, maybe a modern fire piece of equipment, because it would, it would kind of give people the idea of how much has changed in a hundred years and why, and it's a great visual of why it's substandard today.
I actually went to the Historical Society a couple weeks ago and looked through all their files, and they are gonna be sending me the digital versions of all the historical photos that they have for the, um, both stations, and their exhibit right now is the history of the Sanford Fire Department, if anyone is interested.
Oh, nice, okay, perfect timing, guys.
Yeah, about the OSHA, uh, most people punch a clock, they, they, they know they can, they'll be in violation of OSHA. I got a lot of calls, um, from the last council when I, when I put on there that OSHA fines are coming, um, and that's, that's gonna be unavoidable for the city of Sanford and Springville. Um, it's gonna be very costly, so that, that's gonna come into our next year's budget, and the budget after that, if we don't get this in, we're gonna have unnecessary fines, which will add up quite a bit. Um, so, I, I would leave OSHA in there for, for fines, because we can't cover it.
I would tend to respectfully disagree, but-
Yeah, but the guy's punching, punching the clock, knowing OSHA is-
But I'm just saying, just re, just remember, you can say, you don't need to say OSHA to say the same thing.
Um, I wanna comment on that quickly, is that I think the mayor made a good point that I hadn't thought about with the, um, upcoming-
Could somebody put this on the calendar, please?
About that, I took note that the grant funding competition with the OSHA, um, new requirements is gonna be pushing everyone to apply for some of these funding, and that wasn't something that I had, had been on my radar, so I think that that's important to, like, let people know too, that we're kind of in the perfect spot to get, get it done now and do it right, instead of having to force our hand later down the road and not have as much federal funding available.
Any, Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't see, I think maybe you kind of have it in there somewhere, but, um, I think cancer rates really hit home for people. Um, I lost my dad due to cancer, so, you know, that's kind of an impactful thing for me to see, that, you know, that firefighters are having to deal with a lot more chemicals these days, and, um, you know, it's a real problem, being able to decontaminate effectively. So, um, I think that that might be something that could be added in, in that sort of information, uh, sheet, um, to kind of hit home that, you know, firefighters are, are really heavily affected by this, and, you know, um, there's costs, OSHA costs, but there's also, you know, families that are losing people too, so, um, appreciate all the hard work you're doing, and thank you for, for the presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
And Jordan, right now, we just need a vote on the slogan.
Yes, the two slogans.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve-
Well, somebody had a question?
I, I can, I, I just two comments, and then I'll make a motion, is that okay? It, for the site signs, could we get a QR code to the Sanford Connects?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and then Build Our Future was the community-based organization that made the school bond pass.
Okay.
Just to not offend all the folks that worked on that. And I'd like-
Which was a great slogan.
It was a great slogan.
It could, it could have actually been recycled, maybe, but, um, and I would like to make a motion to approve the presented slogans.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And Steve has a comment.
I just wanted to relate all the way ba, all the way back to the school vote, doesn't, I mean, that seems like-
Years and years.
Yeah, so, so far back, so, in the way, way back seat there. Um, but, so, if, the yes and the no vote, so, remember back when we had the, it was a three-piece referendum question for the school? You know, there was the base bid of just building, just the basic school that, that was the bare minimum, and there was a dollar amount to that, and, and a yes vote, and it was explained what you got for your dollar and that. The next was, there was another component that added in, uh, the additional space for the Performing Arts Center and some other amenities, and that was explained what a yes vote is on that. Uh, and then there was a third piece that I think went down just to the athletic fields or something of that nature, but I, yeah, I'm losing the details, but there was three tiers in there, and each one of them was explained as to what the yes vote means. So, on this project, you have, the yes vote, obviously, is the new construction, you can explain that. But I don't think we spent enough time yet, but we will need to in this campaign, of what a no vote means. We're starting to get into that now. We know the critical nature of the OSHA implications now, that it's no longer a matter of, of if, but it's, it's, it's a yes, must do. The, the when becomes more urgent than even before, uh, when it comes to that. Funding, that isn't, that is a significant point, that, uh, we're being strongly encouraged, and I'll say that again, we are being strongly encouraged to make an application towards the construction of these new departments, and that is time-sensitive. So, we have to have a yes vote in order to make those applications. Uh, also, if, on the no vote side of this, you're going, you're going to, all the way back to the pre-feasibility study, and then the feasibility study as to why we can't renovate our departments. So, there, there are not buildings that will withstand the, the forces, uh, of, of nature, so they no longer meet compliance. The minute you lay hands on those structures, and Jamie, you can yell at me if I'm saying something wrong, the minute you lay hands on those structures, to the extent that you're gonna have to do those renovations, you're gonna bring everything to code. Not just the perceived deficiencies that you see now, everything's coming to code. And the cost of doing that by an engineered analysis is so extraordinary that it makes no sense to do that. You're, you're spending good dollars in, in bad, in bad ways. So, that has to be iterated in the no vote, if you vote no. I mean, we set aside in the capital program, funding for, for roofs, for sprinkler systems, and a whole host of other repairs that are needed today. We set those inside in lieu of pushing hard on getting new stations voter, voter approved, to prevent spending that money only to dispose of those or tear those buildings down. So, there's a lot that's gotta go into that no side of the equation. We gotta go back quite a ways in the studies, but I think it's very pertinent information that it's not gonna be a zero tax impact if you vote no. There's gonna be other costs that the community will have to pay for not building the new stations.
So, I'm just gonna say, because you're referring back to it, in a conversation, I had lunch with Kylie today, and she said we are still her favorite building committee to work with, and she thought the group that was formed to pass the project was one of the best she's ever worked with, because they are very committed to community engagement, and that is, we're getting short-term on that. So, community engagement, community engagement, because we had all those meetings, we had that opportunity to set aside all the preconceived notions, et cetera, et cetera, so. But she said we were one of the best to work with, so the challenges this group has to match up to the school group.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. I'd like to point out that I didn't use your mother's name this time.
Horse and buggy, Jordan, horse and buggy.
There is a picket motion in a second.
Yes. All those in favor? All right, moving right along. In order to adopt a proposed strategy plan to address encampments in Sanford based on the 19 strategies adopted by the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, and they actually have an acronym, which I will share, because it's very unusual, like, who could remember this? It's U-S-I-C-H, so it must be a pronunciation somehow, but I'm clueless. So, Steve, you're going to take this away?
I am. So, I tried to encapsulate this in a shorter memo, which turned out to be four pages, uh, because it's a significant document. So, I, I really see, I'd like to read from the memo, but at the same time, I'd like to put the, excuse me, the draft, um, policy up here. There. So, uh, the history on, on what's being asked for here tonight is, and I'm going to seek, uh, the council to adopt the work that's been done on these 19 strategies, as again, put forth, forward by the federal entity of the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. It's the nine, it used to be seven strategies, and they've amended it, uh, in the recent, uh, number of months to, to move that to 19 strategies. Um, the city of Sanford has been working for quite a period of time, let, let me go back into the history here. So, the city, the city of Sanford continues to work diligently to address homelessness, uh, be it our asylum seeker population or unhoused resident population. Through these processes, the, the key to address the unhoused crisis has been the cooperation and organization of the various community partners, emphasis on community partners, the service organizations, uh, such as York County Community Action, York County Shelter Program, Sanford Housing Authority, um, Carrying Unlimited, PATH, all of these partners, and I, I know I haven't listed everybody by a long sight, uh, they've been with, with us at the table from the start of this. So, the key has been toward the success so far of, of addressing the unhoused crisis has been the cooperation and organization of these community partners. Uh, each have varying levels of services and options so that we collectively, collectively may offer. The housing has now largely, and the entry into the workforce of the asylum seeker families is a testament to the successful coordination of the service providers and local county and state resources. But, uh, there remains an unhoused resident population within Sanford. In cooperation with the York County Shelter Program, a warming center was, uh, operated over the 23, 24 winter season. It closed on May 1st. Yet, at its time of closure, over 60% of those that were being served by the shelter were placed into services, shelter, and levels of, of care just prior to the closure. So, emphasis on just prior to the closure. Uh, what we learned from that process is the people there were offered, um, options throughout the, the winter months as being housed, but not until the shelter was in danger of closing did people choose to take services. So, at this juncture, the city has, uh, continued the work to address those persons living outside, unhoused specifically in the encampments. This work has been through the Homeless Task Force, which meets biweekly. The work continues as a coordinated effort based upon the highest and best implementation of all combined services and resources wrapped around the individual needs of those remaining unhoused. So, a roadmap is being presented here tonight, seeking the city council's adoption as our guiding policy to address encampments humanely and effectively. The policy is based upon the 19 strategies for communities to address encampments humanely and effectively, again, as by the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness. The city with its partners are submitting the draft 19 strategies to the city council tonight, seeking your review and adoption. Policy will govern how we will provide assistance to address the public health and safety issues that are indicative of encampments. The basis of the policy was taken from the 19 strategies. Uh, I'd like to read the opening two, two paragraphs that come from that policy, because it really encapsulate what's the, what this document is, is all about. It states, "Across the country, communities are seeking to address both the needs of people living in encampments and public concerns about encampments." And that's, that's the tough balancing act that we've been up against for a number of- And that's, that's the tough balancing act that we've been up against for a number of months. Many want swift action, but the reality is that affordable housing and shelter are often unavailable, and lasting solutions take time. While encampments can be informal communities where people lean on each other for survival and support, and we heard that expressed here this evening, their conditions expose the people living in them to deadly risk of hunger, disease, extreme weather, and violence. Laws that criminalize homelessness are not effective, but instead create barriers to housing and support and lead to harmful consequences. So we've debated all of these at, at length, and that, and all of those statements, by our views, stand to be true. To solve homelessness, communities must use evidence-based strategies to collaboratively, equitably, and humanely address the housing and service needs of people without homes, even when housing is not available. When an encampment is prioritized for closure, the process must be implemented in a humane and trauma-informed way, and the goal must be to connect every person to housing and services to help them overcome and avoid future experiences of homelessness. So that is the crutch of the work that's being presented here tonight. So this summarizes the foundation of the nineteen strategies. The draft before the council this evening represents all of the work of our combined partners to connect people to and leverage services to break the cycle of homelessness as indicative within the encampments. So the draft policies that you see before you here tonight, they're color-coded. I actually, I should have brought up an updated version. I reached, I changed some of the color coding here, so I'll try to reference it as we go. Because some of, even though this, this is a new draft, some of these strategies have been implemented since the time of, of the draft. So it's organized into basically two phases. Phase one starts with strategy one for equity. It, it focuses, focuses on the engagement, to engage the encampment residents in an effort to develop solutions. So it talks about the responsibilities of the communication team, started in November of 2023 and is ongoing. We have the metrics of the York County Shelter, notified people staying at the warming shelter, or the closing of Heritage Crossing back during the winter months, when a majority of them were coming to the warming shelter during the, the night, going back to the encampment, sometimes during the day. Housing navigators have also given a unified message of the closure as being pending. City has now secured the Mill Building, as it is a dangerous and hazardous building, as well as the fire hazard that comes with people trying to encamp inside of that building. The city is to put up signs about the pending closure that, that's going to take place tomorrow. And the Sanford Housing Authority to host area agencies with Resource Hub to assist residents, as we talked about earlier. So there's more about the Resource Hub in here as we move forward. Second strategy is to address the unique needs of people with chronic and acute health conditions. Work with outreach and housing teams with a strong health component to evaluate the health of the people living in the encampment, to bridge the stigma that residents of the encampments feel, they experience with healthcare facilities. So we've been working with the Nassau Health Center, Main Access Points, Southern Maine Healthcare, and other advocacy groups. That started in November of twenty-three. There have been some medical issues that are so, so acute that they've had to go all the way to, to Main Health in Portland because it couldn't be treated locally. So that, those services and that care has been ongoing. Again, many of these services, such as getting somebody to take, take wound care treatment and such under that, with the providers at Nassau Healthcare, starts to build that trust that they can go to other facilities. Some of them are very hesitant to go to other facilities. The third strategy was to establish a cross-agency multi-sector response. I think this is what I am most proud of, as far as the, the response in here, is that, you know, it's been combined, a combination of the city administrative team, mayor and city counselors, the police department, and specifically the mental health unit within the police department as well, the fire department, Sanford Housing Authority, York County Community Action, the Nassau Community Health, York County Shelter Programs, Main Access Point does a significant amount of work down there in the encampment and other areas, as well as the school department, because they talk to you about over two hundred students that they are aware of and, and addressing within the school department as well. They've been actively participating. We've had Senator Collins' staff, also, we have had other staff, congressional staff in there from Senator King and Representative Pingree from Times. The United Way of Southern Maine has participated in our task force. The York, the YMCA, keep wanting to put York in there, the YMCA staff has participated, as well as PATH, PATH worker has participated as well. So again, we've been meeting bi-weekly as a homeless task force with this concentration of, of individuals. We've peeled that back as of late to a smaller admin, administrative group to finalize out on these strategies and really focus in for their implementation. We held a summit, a large summit on December eleventh, back at the high school, talked with the leg, our area legislators, and we, we had some further input on that, which was very good here this evening. But it did get lost in translation. There was so much being asked for, the state legislature, around housing and homelessness and encampments, shelter services and such under that, that funding got put into certain pools, but not into others. So I recognize the legislature and the governor did a significant lift and dedicated a lot of resources around homelessness and housing. Again, it's just somewhat in pools that aren't as advantageous to our needs as they might be otherwise. So we continue to advocate and work for, for that as well. There was the creation of the Food Committee to ensure unhoused populations were getting food. The Sanford Housing Authority and York County Shelter Programs partner to offer a community free meal on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We have another meal provider here this evening that's been, been doing that for the encampment population predominantly. The warming shelter opened November of twenty-three and operated through this, this winter through May first. And again, we established a York County Legislative Committee to review legislative bills and advocate for appropriate levels of funding going forward. The, there was engagement with the encampment residents, so conducting outreach, and you'll see this in here again in a second area, but the outreach to date has been performed by the mental health unit, the Sanford Housing Authority, the York County Shelter Program, and the York County Community Action with their various housing navigators, our, our mental health workers and police officers, and other outreach personnel. That started in two thousand and nineteen and has been ongoing. So I won't bother to go through all of the metrics here, but they've been significant. And I will note in there that this is now very coordinated. The housing navigators are talking with themselves, with each other, the, the food elements are talking with each other, the supply lines are there. There's, there's nobody working in a silo anymore. So it's been a very, very strong, coordinated effort. Educate the public and build support. So let's launch a public education campaign to increase awareness and support for the humane encampment strategies. The strategy, these specific strategies start here tonight, but we, we have been, I have been presenting on behalf of the Homeless Task Force, as well as the asylum seekers here for well in excess of a year. The council's been receiving that. Each, each meeting updates us as far as what the work is being done on either of those two topics. Again, I'm not focused on the asylum seekers here tonight because we really have done, there's been an exceptional level of progress there. That is, they, they've been addressed, and they're, and they're in our community working now. It's our unhoused residents that, that need the assistance at this point. Strategy four is to empower outreach teams and health providers to lead the effort. So the action was to identify lead agencies for the encampment, decide if and how and when law enforcement will be involved, include multiple outreach teams and health providers in planning to prevent duplication of efforts and ensure that the outreach workers are cultural, cultural, head cultural competency. So again, Sanford Police Department, York County Shelter Program, York County Community Action Corporation, and the Sanford Housing Authority. And that started in May of this year and is ongoing. So ensure safety and sanitation. So provide sanitation facilities, regular waste collection, and safety measures. We've had porta-potties out into police department location for security purposes and such under that. Yes, there was trash collection being done down there until the funding for that ran out. Once that funding ran out, the trash, trash collection stopped. We are also performing that on property that we didn't have permission to be doing that on. So that became an element of concern as well. Here in red, conduct outreach and encampment. So regular visits to the encampments, I highlighted this in green, that is ongoing. But funding for outreach teams. So that was the dialogue with the Main Housing Authority and, and other state officials recently. Always to include great pain from the Governor's Office of Innovation. He has been exceptionally helpful to us. I find the Office of Innovation is, is that go-to mechanism under the Governor Mills administration. If you can't find an answer, or you can't find a solution, you don't know where to go, you go to that office. And the staff there is exceptional. So I've talked with them, and I believe we've got strong traction there as far as getting funding to fund one, if not two, community outreach positions to bolster our services and getting out there. We also started the Sanford Bike Patrols. We have two officers dedicated out there that are on bikes, feeding out and making regular contact with the unhoused population, predominantly in the immediate downtown area, and then they go to other facility, other areas as well. So those agencies participating again is York County Community Action, PATH, the Shelter Program, and the Sanford Housing, Housing Authority. And they've been collaborating with Preble Street on the street outreach program. So they have an exceptional model set up, so we're learning from them. We're not trying to create something new or reinvent the wheel. They have the model that we, we have been following. Offer low-barrier shelter, shelter and housing. So regularly visit the encampments to build relationships and provide information on available services. So that is on, on an ongoing basis. And I can say with confidence that the majority of people that have been there for any length of time have been contacted as far as case management, coordinated entry, and shelter services have been offered. But again, some individuals choose not to take those options. Our concern is that the human nature of things is that they, they procrastinate, they hold off on that, they don't take services until the last end of time, as far as the encampment is concerned, and then there's just a rush, and it's, and it's an overflow. So continue to work that towards getting positive results. So again, we had the warming shelter that was in there through until the end of April. We had the community policing, bike patrol, and we had the housing navigation services for coordinated assessments, case conferencing, and resource sharing. And again, all of those agencies that have those services are now coordinated and working with each other for that. The fifth strategy is to prioritize a culture based on health and safety factors. This is what we're up against right now, is provide medical, mental health, and substance use disorder at the Resource Hub. That Resource Hub will be stood up starting June, what did I say, June eleventh? I'm sorry, June eleventh. Remember, I didn't remember that a meeting that happened this morning, I thought it was yesterday. So it's been, been that week already. Yeah, so that work is ongoing. Other ways to address health and safety, action being taken in there is review and examine our local ordinances and see how they affect the outcomes, develop criteria to determine which encampments will be prioritized for closure, which would benefit from interim steps and to mitigate and prevent health and safety concerns. So we know there are significant health and safety concerns at the Heritage Crossing, street crossing right now, and those need to be addressed. That if left unaddressed, that's only gonna continue to become worse. All right. Strategy six was engaging our neighboring residents and businesses, to engage nearby residents and businesses about plans for addressing encampments. So the city gets constant inquiry of, abouting property owners, concerned about what they're seeing, what they're witnessing, what they're experiencing in, in, in the area. Businesses are expressing the same. So I'd like people to recognize that there's pressure on all sides of the equation, you know? Do nothing, leave it alone, do everything, we don't wanna, we don't wanna experience the impacts of that anymore, and there's everything in, in between. So again, the nineteen strategies looks at all of those factors and really seeks to provide, you know, equitable, humane treatment of the individuals there and connect them to the appropriate resources pursuant to their individual needs. So phase one has been predominantly accomplished. So now we enter into phase two, which is the transition to permanent solutions. As was discussed here earlier, it is difficult to find that permanent housing solution. It takes time, and it takes a lot of resources. And if, and if somebody is not under an organized envelope, such as at the shelter, where they can obtain housing navigation and other services, it becomes very difficult. So, under there is, the first is to collect and share qualitative and quantitative data. So the metrics that we have in there is the Homeless Management Information System. So I've talked quite a bit about that as far as coordinated entry. This is one of the most important points for me, is knowing that, that, that the HMIS system is being utilized to its full potential, that all of the providers throughout all of York County are utilizing the system through our Region One Hub, so that coordinated case management can take place. Because if an individual is, has contact over here with a certain provider, and that's not recorded, and they're over in a new location, and there's another provider, you're starting all over again. It's an absolute waste of resources if it's not fully coordinated. Strategy eight is to track shelter and housing availability. Again, as I talked to you, the housing navigators are sharing those resources now. We need to track the type of interventions people need in the barriers to housing, such as the lack of identification, criminal records, evictions, document readiness, and measure that data on available and offered sheltered beds, interim and permanent housing units, mental health and substance use treatment beds. So again, at the task force meeting this week, we were looking at availability and capacities. There are capacities out there right now, there is availability. The timing is, is good to be moving in this direction. If this was back in the middle of COVID, it would have been a, a different scenario. Strategy number nine is to track the status of the people housed and yet to be housed. That's been ongoing for a significant period of time, but the tracking for just the encampment down there really focused on January eighth going forward. Our mental health unit has been tracking this for years, for several years now, on a spreadsheet. They've identified the individuals, why it is they're unhoused, what issues they're experiencing, what their impediments have been, and they've had success in getting people placed into permanent housing solutions by tracking that information. And I did note during our December eleventh meeting that the City of Sanford was able to put a lot of data up there. We knew our data, we knew, we knew who, who, who our unhoused population is, and the other participating communities could not bring that forward. They, they weren't, they hadn't drilled down to that level of addressing the individual and their basic needs. The tenth strategy is to address basic needs and provide healthcare. So again, that's been ongoing with the York County Shelter Program, our options liaison, Main Access Points has done a significant amount of work at the encampment elsewhere in the community, and Nassau Healthcare Center has done a tremendous amount of medical attention. They are a federally qualified healthcare facility, this falls within their bailiwick, and they've been exceptional partners with us throughout this process. The eleventh strategy was to conduct comprehensive, coordinated, and ongoing housing-focused outreach. And again, I've talked to you extensively about the housing navigators from York County Community Action, the Shelter Program, Sanford Housing Authority, as well as the City of Sanford's General Assistance Director. Just tomorrow, we have a phone conference at two o'clock where we will be further coordinating the use of the General Assistance Program in conjunction with, with the York County Shelter Program, whereby we can appropriately use qualified expenditures to put people into the Shelter Program, pay a significantly reduced rate in comparison to other emergency housing options, and at the same time, I'll know that they're connected with housing navigation, case management, three meals a day, and a full host of services. This twelfth strategy, which is to provide storage, that's now a green, that's been started. This 12th strategy, which is to provide storage, that's now a green, that's been started. We're looking at when the encampment is ultimately closed, individuals will have a number of personal items. They will be given specific bags to put their paperwork in, so that that's preserved, and they can keep that on their persons. But for those possessions that they have, that they can immediately take, whether they go into a new facility or another location, we will provide storage for that. We have quotes for storage containers to become placed. They'll be managed by the police department. They'll be inside the gated area, locked up, and people will be able to access their items as labeled through the police department on a 24-hour basis. 13th strategy is to ensure access to housing and services. So again, ask the encampment residents what housing and service options they need and want, and determine funding sources available and need to connect residents to low-barrier housing and services appropriate for their needs. Collaborate with the agencies. Again, that's the Homeless Task Force, City of Sanford, the Sanford Housing Authority, Community Action Corporation, York County Shelter, and the Hub. When we say the Hub, that's the Region One Hub. Okay. The 14th strategy is to ensure the interim strategies promote dignity, respect, and pathways to permanent housing. This is a very important point. We have the area agencies and community policing by the Sanford Police Department, and we seek to create the creation of policies and procedures that protect privacy to ensure its services are person-centered. So go back to the HMIS system. There are names in there. There's a host of information that only those service providers that are authorized to access that information for the coordinated case management can see. So for example, when I'm giving information at the Homeless Task Force or on other areas, I don't get individual names. We get case counts, type, number, and other statistics, but there's no names associated with that. The policies need to be trauma-informed and based on harm reduction strategies. The 15th strategy is to develop pathways to permanent housing and support. So work with housing developers to increase the supply of affordable housing. We know that the city has put on that housing forum for the last two years. I talked about the nearly 500 units that the city has put hands into as far as tax increment financing. We have a number of affordable housing units that are being created by the Sanford Housing Authority, the 30-unit Housing First Project. Yes, there will be a period of time before that's constructed. But I can't tell you all of the impediments that we're stepping over to get that in place. From the Housing Authority, working with Main State Housing to secure the funding for that, we are one of the two dedicated sites for York County, to working with the property down there on the river. That's where it's cited to be built. Those properties are very distinct as far as their ability to build on. It's impacted by shoreline zoning, limited amount of developable space. Their size and space constrained. We've had to do the Phase One, Phase Two environmental assessments, and we have to do an update to the Phase Ones on there in order to move forward with the Housing First. So it is not without jumping over significant hurdles that we move forward as far as having the Sanford Housing Authority build the applicable units there. York County Community Action will provide the 24/7 case management on site, and I believe there's a discussion with the York County Shelter Program about funds that they have, about attaching a food resource and hub there as well. 16th strategy was to ensure encampments are closed humanely. That's the predominant focus of these strategies. So the Homeless Task Force and our communication team, we seek to be able to verbalize and communicate that out that pursuant to these strategies, that the city, upon consideration of work on those encampments, that they are being treated appropriately. It's not a discriminant action, and it's not to be taken lightly, but it's going to be taken under these guiding principles with all of the service providers in here and connecting those that are unhoused with the specific resources that they need to end that cycle. Strategy 17 is to expand the supply of affordable housing. I've talked to you about that. All the way to the governor's office has created the State of Maine Housing Data Portal that drills down on the needed housing. So when we're looking at housing, it's no different than we did with the asylum seekers, it's not just housing that might be available only here in Sanford. They're looking across jurisdictions as to where people can be placed and put into housing. City of Sanford has an active land bank commission that has successfully returned blighted and abandoned and foreclosed property to livable and affordable housing across the continuum. We've worked with, help me out. Yeah. The entity that's building the homes, yeah.
Habitat.
Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you. Habitat for Humanity. Is, yeah. Yep. Yep. So worked extensively with them. We've worked with a number of other developers to take these properties, blighted properties, properties that were sitting vacant and not doing anything, to return them back into the housing stock. So as the gentleman indicated with the sign earlier, housing is the key. You need the continuum of housing. You need a large amount of that in order to solve this problem. We also have the Legislative Committee for York County that is tracking legislation and advocating in the appropriate areas. I'm sorry that we didn't advocate expressly as to where it worked best in the legislature, but we learned our lessons, and we will do better in this next session. And then Strategy 18, the next to last strategy, is to interrupt the pipelines into homelessness. Identify opportunities for intervention and prevention measures. Assist residents in accessing benefits like Medicaid, SNAP benefits, WIC, housing vouchers, and other public systems that may serve people to prevent homelessness. I can remember when Deputy Chief Small, who's here this evening, when he started this work way back in 2018 or even before, for the small number of unhoused we had at that point in time, he said, "Steve, I want to get us to a point where we can prevent the people becoming unhoused, because it's so much harder to address it once they do become unhoused." So that's one of the key strategies in here, and to prevent the recidivism rates for people going into the shelter. And then lastly, the Phase Three, Building the Long-Term Stability, that goes to Strategy Nine, is Build and Strengthen Safety Nets, is to create a Homeless Prevention Committee. So we haven't gotten to the Homeless Prevention Committee yet. I believe the Homeless Task Force is a great stepping way to that, and put emphasis with working with the United Way of Southern Maine. We continue to look at the Alice reporting in there. We realize that there are a number of people that are on the cusp, that they could become unhoused because of their economic situation, so we review that data on a regular basis. So that's the basis of the 19 strategies, the three phases. We've finished Phase One. We're entering into Phase Two now. Phase Three will get us to the other side, where we're working more on the recidivism and addressing people before they become unhoused. But at this juncture, we have to focus on those that are currently unhoused before we can get to that next step. So I would ask the City Council if there's any amendments they want to see here, but this represents the significant partnership and the coordinated use of those partnering agencies in here to address homelessness within our community, and this is the federally-accepted standards that we've been working to meet in order to be able to address our homeless encampments in a humane and effective manner. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt or propose a strategy planned to address encampments in Sanford based on the 19 strategies adopted by the United States Interagency Council on homelessness. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
I think you're serious that you're ready to be done with that one.
I am so, it's been such a long journey. And even with the discussion, I just want to thank Diane for putting this together. This is quite the document, and I know that your husband really wrote most of it because he wants. So, yeah. So thank you very much for all the work done. And the people that we have dealt with, and Anne, you probably can speak to this too, are just amazing. Everyone on this task force was just so caring and wanting to do what was right by our homeless population, and wanting to do, not just make us feel good for helping, but to really do something that would make a difference, and to help them get out of the poverty that they're in and the homelessness. So that was our task, and it's probably one of the better committees I've ever worked on. I really enjoyed it. So any questions, comments, more?
I'm just hoping that the people who have been able to see this this evening, and I'm assuming we're going to put some of this information on the website, understand that, you know, emptying a camp is not just a fly-by-the-night decision, and that there's a thought process involved, there's a plan in place, and there is a plan to help as people are asked to leave the property, and that they're not alone. I mean, we, I think when you choose to be outside, you choose to be outside. But if you don't wish to be outside, there are multiple options available to working a process to get housed.
Thank you. Anyone? Jonathan?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for all the people that worked on putting this together. It's nice to see, you know, a plan and some metrics, you know, basically your classic Raci chart with responsible people and all that. So it's good to see this, and it'd be interesting to see the metrics come out as we work on implementing this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pete?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this. Closing a camp is definitely not an easy decision to do. We can have 100 reasons, 1,000 reasons why. And taking land to solve the problem wasn't as easy as you all think either. A lot of thought went into this. If we were going to close the camp, we needed to have a solution, and all the other cities really didn't have any solutions. This was one which Steve Buck worked really hard on to see if we could even get that land. So this was a lot of work, a lot of different agencies, and I'd like to say thank you to the City of Sanford, because we really did come up with a good model for the rest of the state. It's something to be proud of. Diane, thank you so much. A lot of phone calls, so thank you. Appreciate everybody that did everything for this. It's a good thing for Sanford.
Right. Anne?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate, as the city manager has said, and Mayor, you did as well, but the collaboration with our partners in this is really what made us as successful as we have been, and what I know we will be in the future. And I just hope that that's a continued strategy that the city employs in terms of that collaboration, our ongoing challenges as well as opportunities that we have come forward here in Sanford. And it just shows that so many great things can happen, right, when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And Steve, I want to give you kudos for starting this whole thing up and leading it week after week after week. So appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. So all those in favor. Thank you very much. We're actually on to the last.
First reading.
It's the first reading, so, oh, look, here she comes. All right. In order to approve proposed amendment to Chapter 280 of, you know, I'm going to hate seeing Chapter 280 symbol after line.
I know you are. I'm sorry.
Of the Sanford City Ordinance for a revision to subsection 280-13-5 standards for conditional use of approved, the addition of subsection F, excavation contracting business. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the first reading. Take it away.
So just as we discussed, we are looking to add excavation contracting businesses as a conditional use in the rural and rural mixed-use zones. It is currently allowed as a conditional use in the urban zone, and so these conditions would also apply to that. And currently, it is allowed in the rural and RMU zones as an accessory use to a single-family residential use, but we don't feel the need to continue that as long as the conditions are met, such as the frontage along a numbered highway, the minimum lot size of five acres, the minimum setback of 100 feet from a residential property line, and the buffering of a minimum of 15 feet high and 30 feet wide along. Sorry, I lost my place. For all outdoor staging and parking areas for equipment.
So all I'd ask my fellow councilors is, you're having your first site plan on this tomorrow, am I correct?
Actually, it was this morning.
It was this morning. So if you have any major issues with this, and it's going to disrupt one business that is attempting to expand in a location that is described by this change, just to make sure you have any comments brought forward.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So it'll probably go back to zoning subcommittee.
If there's nothing substantial, I don't think we'll have to go to zoning subcommittee with it. There was nothing brought up.
No, it was just that one addition to the minimum setback, but if that's not substantial enough, we don't have to?
Right. Yeah, then second reading in a couple weeks, and we should be done.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
And council members' comments? Pete?
Celtics Thursday night.
Nate?
Also Thursday night, home opener of the Sanford Mayners. So let's do something a little bit more local. Yeah. So that's, so there's that. Also, just wanted to say thank you to all those who organized the ceremonies for Memorial Day. I wasn't able to attend the one in the cemetery, but I was able to attend the one that the parade ended in Springvale. It was a very solemn occasion to remember who we've lost. I also wanted to thank our deputy mayor for giving a nice, and more importantly, short speech in the rain about the importance of exercising the rights that those who have died of wars to help protect. So that includes getting out there and voicing your opinions, and especially voting. So just remember to exercise those rights that, you know, people have died for us to have.
Thank you. Anne?
Well, of course, I have to congratulate the Sanford High School class of 2024, who graduates tomorrow. And for any parents like myself out there with a graduating kiddo, a reminder that the average age of young adults living at home is now 24, so we might have six more years. And then another note that Sanford Adult Education has their graduation on June 12th, and I think that's a really special graduation that deserves a shout-out as well. So, thank you.
Bob?
Yes, and in years past, I was asked to speak several times at adult day graduations, and they are truly special for those people. They are truly special. So the street cleaner came down my street the other day and cleaned my street up. So that's a big deal. That hasn't happened in a while, and I know why. I know there's been problems with the street cleaner, but I thought it was worth mentioning that they came down. The other thing I wanted to say, to throw back to my old days on the school committee, is to additionally remind people that you need to get out and vote for the school budget. Don't take that lightly. You need to get out and do that. I said years ago, I was trying to think how many years ago, I think it was probably about 40 years ago, actually, at a town meeting, you know, that I believe, and I still believe, that public education is the backbone of this country. And I'm going to stretch that out a little bit more and say that access to a free public education is the backbone of this country. It's also the backbone of the community. We all want economic development in this community. We all want new stores, new restaurants, new places to go, nice places to live, good jobs. That all comes from the public education. Essentially, we provide our kids, the kids that grow up in this community. Schools shape our kids' future, all of our kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews. If you don't have kids in the school, so you don't want to pay for the schools, you have your neighbor's kids. You have maybe your grandkids, because your kids have aged out. Everybody needs to be entitled to a free public education of quality. And because all of us, all of us, had an opportunity to get a free public education for ourselves, whether we chose to do that or not, we might have chosen not to finish it. We might have chosen to be homeschooled or to pay to go to a private school, whatever that might be, you had access to a free public education in Sanford, as long as I've been here, of quality. That's a burden. That's a burden. That's a burden, and it's time for all of us to pay back. We got an opportunity for our education, and we need to pay back, and we need to take care of the kids today and provide them with their free public education. It's a cycle, and we need to continue it. And it's very important that we get out and vote, and make sure that our schools are funded to the best of our ability to fund them for our kids and for the future of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Maura?
Just quickly, I'm going to say my prayers that your graduation is outside tomorrow night, and there aren't Thunder Boomers, and the Mayors opener gets to be played. I think the Celtics are fine. I think they'll be fine. They'll be inside. And just on a side, if I recall, are you a Bruins fan, too?
Yeah, I'm from New England.
Okay. So, I happen to have seen a photo that people in town might be interested in, so keep your eyes peeled, that there is actually a friendship, I won't say who, in town between the, I believe the captain of the Bruins, and the goalie came with him this time, and they were actually in Springvale last week after kind of wandering various areas of Springvale. I've got a great photo of it, and I know who the friend was that they were wandering with, but, so if you happen to, is his name Brad Marshand, Marshand, I think? Anyway, if you happen to see someone who looks kind of alike, it might actually be him, so, I just thought I'd let that out there.
Nice place, Hopeley-Vizing-Samford.
I don't know. I think they had hunting gear on in my photo, so, yeah. So, I think they were here, you know, doing outdoorsy thing, which is what we're known for here in Maine, so, it was kind of, it was, it was fun. The person who saw them was talking, was doing some business with the person who's friend, and kept looking at him in back, and looking at him in back, and finally, they admitted it was, he was who he was. So, anyway, I thought that you would enjoy that. Thank you.
And the most important graduation is happening at daycare. I have two little granddaughters. One is Addie Brink, and the other is Berkeley Zivany, who are graduating next Thursday and will be going into preschool. So, this will be an exciting day for us. So, yeah, they do the whole thing. All right. Anything for future agenda items? Jonathan?
So, this probably could just go to Safety Committee, but I, I received an email, and probably everybody was copied on it, about the connection of the trail from, that goes across Oak Street, I believe it is, in Springvale?
Yep.
With the rail trail. So, the, the suggestion was to put in...
It's already been forwarded.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Which brings up something that Jonathan reminded me of. Remember I was saying how wonderful those new cut-throughs are at the high school on the trails? That would be great if we closed up the wider accesses and just could adapt our gates the same way, where people could walk or ride their bike through, but you could actually stop the heavier duty, just enough for ADA compliance. But they're really nice. If you have not been able to go by the high school, the easiest one to see is the one across the softball field. But their, the kids did a great job, and they adapted those rails that block vehicles from going, going down there, and I think anybody who walks or does anything physical and has to get through those gates is happy to see them.
Maura, I kind of liked having to stop at the gates, breathe for a little bit, and then go around, so it's really messing up my...
When you have an 85-year-old mother, and you kind of have to walk her around one side or the other, or you have someone you know who falls by trying to get around without taking a break, you're like, eh, this kind of ride through the middle's nice.
And Jonathan, that has been added. The Trails Committee is going to put the crosswalk in there, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be an easy thing to do, and there is a favorable traffic through there, so, it'd be great.
Go ahead.
Not, not an agenda item, but a, a question regarding Granicus. The, Larissa, are you the administrator for that? Do you know if you can lengthen the time required to change the password? Seems like every time I log into the darn thing, I have to change my password, and I'm in the middle of a meeting, and it's not an uncomplicated thing, you know, and so I just close it up, put it away.
I just have the same problem. We don't have any control over that, unfortunately. It's, it's every six, it's every six months.
I'm like ready to.
No, no, it's not six. It seems like I'm just changing it every...
Time flies.
And according to all my tenants...
We're not going to talk about your age.
And according to all my tenants, it goes faster the older you get, Bob.
That's been proven scientifically.
Yeah. All right. It is, is now four minutes to nine. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.